This is what I'm looking at here.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not, so, but that side would be free.
Not, you, it's still, they would still have the placement of the park. But cost is also something that we consider. It's not in additional use conditions. It's not, I think A would wear different costs. It's not standard.
Oh, yeah.
Usually you'd have cost and then like it is. I'll follow it. Yeah. That's not that.
I, you know, I, I don't know if I disagree with that the fact that it cost, which is high. You know, it costs $2,000 to clear a paper brown. You're clearing 6,400 feet of brown. So that's.
They probably would have had to clear a bit more.
So that, that, that doesn't make any economic sense. I would, you know, and I guess we don't even say about because of.
Right. And it's not a fact. With additional use, we really wouldn't even have to get that area around it. But we take your.
Do I still?
I don't know. You need to be speaking about.
Bring it up.
Because. Knowing that cost is not a factor.
Right. Recognizing that cost is not a factor.
Yes, that's something we consider.
I mean, what do they do with that park?
The neighborhood park, we got comments. Really, isn't it? Well, no, we're going to be.
No, I didn't see their comments.
The park, the Chinese park. And they said they supported that. And that Edna Fisk across the street, Neighborhood Area Park.
I can't, I don't know what they do with that park.
Whatever people walk around and walk in.
Well, I mean, when I looked at the site app, I didn't see it.
No, it's probably not in development. It may not be a developed park. It's not to say it gets money and solve the risk to be developed.
Right.
But when I looked at it, I didn't think it was developed either. It's more of an open neighborhood area for wild game.
It was like 26,000. 26,000.
That sounds about right. It looked like at least eight lots or 10 lots.
Just fine, thank you. You warming up?
Yeah. And so they wanted it across the street to give them a buffer. They didn't want it right next to that.
So they were really going off with the neighborhood. That was the primary reason.
What did they pay for their leave?
I don't know. They actually are purchasing it. They're purchasing it, yes.
Pretty good?
I don't know. I want to get home and check the watch. We have money now. I'm not looking. All these people here are, you're asking why.
I know it's me there.
Well, they wanted to be one here at all. Let's see why.
Oh, my, another. The gravel.
Who are you? Evening, whatever it is.
Edna Fisk Memorial Park and Neighborhood Use there. That's how they described it. They've got five categories of parks. That's all.
Well, I'm not sure. It's just in a. And this one, you know, vicious being a way. Yeah, I have to screen for evidence.
Uh-oh. There.
Yeah.
Yes. Business, project of appreciation. I think it's a natural experience.
I will call the December 1st, 2008 meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would the secretary call the roll, please?
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Mr. Frederick is excused this evening. And the next item on our agenda, approval of minutes from October 6th and October 30th. Ma'am Chair, move for approval of the, those two minutes?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton?
Oh, on October 6th, there's a James Weddleton. You might want to change that to John.
Okay, we can fix that.
Ma'am Chair, I also.
All right, Ms. Pease?
On the October 6th minutes, I had a couple of possible clarifications on page 5. It may or may not reflect the testimony of Ms., or the comments of Ms. O'Brien correctly, but it creates confusion in the middle of the page.
Is it page 5?
Yes, of page 5. The sentence begins, "The department is able to see that a 170-foot creek setback is being provided and tracked it out. It will not be privately owned." And then farther down, it says, Ms. O'Brien replied, "That it will be held in common by all the homeowners, but none of it or the wetlands are incorporated into private property." And later on in the minutes, it's clarified that says, to say that it will be privately owned by the homeowners association. So probably she said it that way, but it's confusing and I didn't know whether it needed to be, there needed to be, what we would do in that case.
Oh.
And also on this same page, in the very last paragraph there, says, "Ms. O'Brien stated that under the R9 zone, the density is .8 DUA and under the R6, the density is .8 and the density, this proposal is .68." I believe those densities are, the first two densities are incorrect. I think it should be .5 DUA for the R9, but I can't remember.
And. Well, it doesn't sound logical that the R9 and the R8 densities would be the same.
Right, so that should be checked and corrected.
And corrected.
And there was one more, I believe, on page 11. I'm turning to it now. Again, this was a statement that if you weren't at the whole, well, on the face of it seems incorrect, but.
In which paragraph did it end?
In the next to last paragraph. It says that Ms. Nard asked why this zoning change should be made. Mr. Hoffman replied that R9 does not require cluster development. And I guess I felt that was confusing because no zoning requires cluster development.
But however, if that's what was said, that's what needs to be in the, in the minutes.
That, that's, that's my, my confusion, I guess.
Okay.
If that is what's said, then I guess that should be there.
Well, maybe.
But I think that the correction on the, what about the corrections on page 5 with regard to the statements that the tract proposed would not be privately owned?
Yeah, if that's what was said, even if it's awkward.
Mm-hmm.
That's what she said.
Okay.
Yes, we can ask Ms. O'Brien to review that.
Okay.
And then we can check the tape on what Mr. Hoffman said. He may have said that the R9 does not allow for cluster development rather than require or provide for.
Okay. So I would ask that those changes and then the density numbers or numerals on page 5 be checked before we pass it.
Okay. Do you want to see it back?
Um, uh, no, I guess not.
Okay. So are there any other corrections or changes, Mr. Weddleton?
Well, I think while you're looking, listening to that tape on page 25, about 14 lines from the bottom, Mr. Grode said, "Skystream has a 12-foot blade." Then the second bottom line, he said it has a 6-foot blade. According, according to this. Maybe he said it had two 6-foot blades a second time.
Okay. Anything else? Is there any objection to approval subject to checking those items noted? Hearing none, those items are approved. Okay, we're now at disclosures. Mr. Isham.
Mr. Earnhardt, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
Not this evening, no.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Nothing to disclose.
Mr. Frederick's not here. Ms. Yoshimura?
Nothing to disclose.
Ms. Jones?
A lot to disclose. I just will note that I'll be abstaining from resolution numbers 1A, B, and D as I did not participate in those actions for conflict of interest. And then on the items, the remainder of the items on our agenda, in cases number G1 and G2 where Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility are the petitioner. I have previously been excused from matters where AWU has been the petitioner as the law firm that I work for represents AWU and has a contract with the municipality to represent them. And on cases G3 and G4 where the petitioners in both instances are Acolutna Inc., I have previously been excluded and excused from cases where Acolutna's been the petitioner if SIRI has been involved. And since this is a property, both of these cases relate in some way to SIRI as it involves natural resource extraction and SIRI owns the gravel in the natural resource extraction operation. So it would be in keeping with previous practice that I'd be excused from those cases as well. And how they all ended up on one agenda, I don't know.
In the way we've handled this in the past, we make a positive motion requiring the individual to participate, then we have a brief discussion and we vote on whether we require the person to participate. So what I'd like to do is entertain a motion first for cases G1 and 2, which both involve Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility, directing Ms. Jones to participate.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we heard Ms. Jones basically indicating that her firm represents Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility so that there's a potential conflict of interest there and in the past that there has, we have excused her because of that potential conflict. And is there any other comments from any other members of the commission? Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, I forgot to acknowledge that under the consent agenda.
Is your microphone on, Ms. Yoshimura?
I think it is.
Oh, good.
I'm sorry. Under D1E, I was excused for a conflict of interest and so I should not be voting for approval on that.
That's fine, okay.
Yep.
Is there any other, is there any further discussion on the motion that's in front of us to require Ms. Jones to participate in G1 and G2? I will not be supporting the motion. So there's probably going to be disagreement, so we're going to have to use our machines. So, please vote. Okay, Ms. Jones, you're excused from that one. Now we'll deal with the Acolutna Inc., cases G3 and 4. I'll entertain a positive motion directing Ms. Jones to participate.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Again, the same reason applies before, that because there's a connection with the subsurface rights with SIRI being involved with Acolutna and that Ms. Jones' firm represents one or both of the petitioners, that she'd be excused. And again, I will not be supporting this motion. Is there any comments or any other members of the commission? Okay, there will be disagreement on this, so again, we'll vote. Please vote. Okay, Ms. Jones, you're also excused from that. Do you have anything else to disclose?
No. I'm okay with the remaining items.
Mr. Phelps?
Nothing.
Mr. Wang?
Like Ms. Jones, I have a conflict on items G3 and G4. Our firm represents Acolutna Inc., the petitioner, and I've typically been excluded from participating in Acolutna Inc. matters and believe that would be required in this case.
Okay, the same requirements apply. Have a positive motion directing Mr. Wang to participate?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. In this particular case, we have a situation where Mr. Wang's firm represents Acolutna Inc. and there's a real possibility of conflict of interest there. So there will be disagreement on this. We will have to vote. Please vote.
Oh, no, I can't. I just abstained. Yeah.
Mr. Wang, you're excused from 3 and 4.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Mr. Weddleton?
I, on consent agenda 1C, I did not participate, so abstain from that. Otherwise, no disclosures.
And I have nothing to disclose. Ms. Jones, is this the appropriate time?
Yes.
To make a change? Because Ms. Jones is basically going to be excused from four of the cases tonight and we have case number seven, the last case, I would like to move that we make a change to the agenda and take case number seven first.
Second.
Did you second that?
Mr. Wang did.
Right. The only reason I'm making this motion is because there's no sense having Ms. Jones sit in the back for four hours watching Monday Night Football, especially when her birthday was yesterday and, you know, she needs to recover from her birthday. So we'll go ahead and do this first tonight and then we'll let her go home. So is there any objection? That passes, so.
None from me.
So we will go ahead and, when the time comes, we'll hear case number 2008-157 first, once we get to the public hearing portion of things.
Well, we're back now at the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, move for the approval of the consent agenda items D1A, B, C, D, E, and 5A and B.
Second.
Okay. Is there any, are there any items that need to be pulled?
Ma'am Chair, I request to pull item D1C.
Okay. Anything else?
Pull on D1E.
All right. Anything else? All right. Is there any objection to the remainder of the consent agenda? Hearing none, it is approved, noting that I've abstained from 1A, B, and D, and Ms. Yoshimura has abstained from 1E. Okay, Ms. Pease, item 1C.
Ma'am Chair, item 1C is the Creekview Estates on Little Rabbit Creek, which the commission denied the petitioner's request to rezone. And the findings, as printed up by staff, do not have any of the specific substantive statements that we made regarding our decision not to rezone. Few years ago, the staff, municipal attorney told us to make substantive findings on all of our cases, and I think we've tried especially hard to do it if we have found against an application. So I think the commission's findings need to be recapped point by point as recorded in our minutes. And then we should see this, this case again, this resolution again to check the findings.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to send this back?
Yes, Madam Chair.
While we're drafting?
I would like to send this, move to send resolution number 2008-0072 back to staff for itemization of the findings on which we based our decision as reflected in the minutes of that meeting and then we'd bring it back before the commission for verification.
Okay, is, and was that seconded by Mr. Earnhardt?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that will go back for, to be revised accordingly. Mr. Weddleton, item D1E.
On, is this the right one? Do we need to, okay, on.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, on the second page, point number 7. I just want to see if we can reword the point that, the first sentence, "The issue regarding the pond is separate from the issues surrounding the pond." And I didn't know what that meant, but I think what it meant was, "Issues regarding the pond and water quality of the surrounding wells are separate from the school site selection." I think that was a point we were making. That's not stated anywhere else.
Okay. Could you, are you proposing that change for this?
I'm proposing that change.
Okay, could you repeat that then?
Replace the first sentence in part 7 with, "Issues regarding the pond and water quality quality of, and the water quality of surrounding wells is separate from the issues related to the school site selection."
Surrounding wells, separated from the--
Check that is, maybe I should have said are.
Okay, so I have, as proposed by you, the first sentence now reading, "The issue regarding the pond and the water quality of surrounding wells is separate from the school site selection." Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Weddleton?
No, that's all.
Okay, is there any objection to that change? Okay, we need a motion for this, then, Mr. Weddleton, as changed.
So I move to make the change misstated?
Well, to prove the resolution as changed.
Oh, okay, I move to approve the resolution as changed.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Pease. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that is approved as changed. And that takes care of the consent agenda. And we'll note that Ms. Yoshimura abstained from that. All right. Now we are on to, well, our post, did you include item 5 in your motion? I think you did.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Item 5, which was on our consent agenda, was postponement of a couple of cases that had been slated for our agenda tonight, cases G5 and G6. These were the two cases by QM Development LLC. The one case was for rezoning to R4SL, and the other was a plat for the two tracts of land and two unsubdivided parcels. And the, in the, the one is on O'Malley Road, and the site address for the other is described as East of Independence Drive. So if there's anyone here for those two cases, they will not be heard until January 5th. So hopefully, the word got out to the community about that. The next item on our agenda this evening is the continuation of the public hearing on the AMAT's Public Participation Plan. And we are acting in the capacity as the AMAT Citizen Advisory Committee when we hear this matter this evening. And this is to update the Anchorage, the 2001 Anchorage on the Move document. I don't think that's me. And to make recommendations to the AMAT's Policy Committee regarding changes to this document. And this has been a long time coming, and a lot of folks have worked hard on it. I will defer to Ms. Bernardini for a moment. Does staff plan to give a brief presentation before we proceed this evening? Maybe just a brief explanation of what we're doing here would be helpful. Why we're here, and a little bit about the document and the process, and then we'll entertain comments from the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff is requesting the commission to act on its behalf as the Citizens Advisory Committee to AMAT's to recommend approval of the public review draft Public Participation Plan that was released by the TAC on the 25th of September. Staff has reviewed comments that have been received since the public hearing of November 3rd. We received two comments, and they were extensive. Brooks &amp; Associates, the consulting firm, under contract with the municipality to complete this project, along with staff has prepared a table that is shown in your new packet in ivory. And those comments are specifically from two commissioners seated here this evening, Ms. Pease, Mr. Weddleton. And staff is recommending that the commission, again, in its capacity as the Citizens Advisory Committee, recommend approval of the plan as submitted to you, subject to incorporating the staff response and comments to the issues raised by the commissioners, as well as the previous comments that we provided you at the November 3rd public hearing.
Okay.
I should mention, since the original public hearing, staff was requested by the commission to have extensive advertising. We advertised in both the Daily News with display ads, as well as on the Muni page that's near on the Alaska Journal of Commerce. In addition, we had a number of email and Hot Topic website announcements.
I'd be happy to take any questions, otherwise, we'll wait until the end of the hearing.
Okay, I think that unless there's something burning, we'll wait till the end of the hearing after we've had an opportunity to hear from the public. Ms. Bernardini?
Thank you.
And thank you very much for the documents you provided us with this evening. We appreciate it. I will go ahead and open the hearing at this time. If you are representing a group or organization, you have five minutes for your testimony, and if you're speaking as an individual, you are allowed three minutes. And good evening, Ms. Richardson.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Richardson, and I'm here tonight representing Anchorage Citizens Coalition. In general, I'd like to say that this document, I think, is a significant improvement over past public involvement plans that AMAT's has developed. And I think it may actually impact the way AMAT's interacts with the public. So that gives me some hope. I'd also like to compliment the comments I read just today from Commissioners Weddleton and Pease. They clearly understand this process, put some serious thought into it. It looks like staff accepted a number of your recommendations. So that also gave me hope that we will make some progress here. My primary concern with public involvement at AMAT's is that it's very narrowly focused to deal with the public at an arm's length, or maybe even further. I don't want to say how much further. But the public is kept out of the key decisions. And by saying that, what I'm looking for, as a member of the association, is a linkage, a direct linkage between AMAT's and the Anchorage Comprehensive Plan. That is, the goal of Anchorage Citizens Coalition is for objective implementation of Anchorage 2020. And right now, AMAT's is still over in a corner, focusing on which roads to build. When given our circumstances as a nation, and a state, and a city, it's time to start building that city that we described in Anchorage 2020, and shift money into transit. Right now, if you look at AMAT's budgets, planning process, and public involvement, there is no method for a citizen to be effective in changing AMAT's policies or practices to address where is the money actually being spent. So that's my overarching concern. And again, I think your group is the most informed about these issues. And your group would have the most investment in implementing Anchorage 2020 through the AMAT spending, also with hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars at stake that affect how Anchorage will be built, what city we're building in the future. So that's my long-term goal, is to, for AMAT's to structurally link and be responsible to the goals of Anchorage 2020 in its reporting process. In one way that this public participation plan can help, is to provide the citizens with at least annual reporting on how AMAT's has implemented, not just that we did a plan, but how has AMAT's moved Anchorage closer to achieving the goals of Anchorage 2020? What changes took place this year to get us closer? And that's one mechanical thing, and I will be looking for that in the final product. That's what I realized had to say tonight. Thank you very much. Other questions for Ms. Richardson?
I have a question. Okay, I have, I have a couple folks in the queue. Ms. Pease, and then Mr. Isham and Ms. Yoshimura. Ms. Pease?
She has a question for Ms. Richardson.
Don't run away.
I have two questions. One's directly to you, and then one's regarding an ACC comment, which you might or might not have drafted. You just said that you would like to have an annual review or assessment, report card, if you will, as to how well did AMAT's advance the goals of the comp plan. Who, who should be involved in writing that report card? Would that be something that staff does in-house, or should that be something that there is a broader evaluation on?
Well, that's an excellent question. And as a rule, AMAT's products are prepared in-house and then sent out for public review. So usually, that would be a sufficient opportunity, especially if there is a process like this, to explain, for citizens who care that deeply enough to come to a hearing, why they think that this item needs to be modified. So certainly, if you're doing a report card, part of it would be to ask the public what they think, and what they might recommend on your report.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then I had another question. This says ACC comment. It was on page 17 of our packet.
Do you have a comment number?
Let's see. It's, yes, 35 point. Well, I guess it's, there's several comments under 34.13, 34.13.
I have 34, and then I have 35, with one digit following each.
Okay. The comment is, "Allow the public to comment on what's really important. How much money is spent on roads compared with transit trails and sidewalks? How does AMAT's decide to spend on one project rather than another?" So maybe this is actually partly to staff. So my question is, in response to this, the staff responded that that's a policy item. What the public should be commenting on is a policy item that can't be addressed in the Public Participation Plan. And I was wondering, why would the Public Participation Plan only address the methods of participation and not the topics for participation? Shouldn't that be part and parcel of what this Public Participation Plan is trying to do, saying, "These are the issues citizens really want to have a voice on"?
If you want to respond, you're going to need to come up here to where you have a microphone, Ms. Bernardini.
You know, I had some follow-up on that, too. Could we wait maybe till afterwards and then pursue that? Because quite a few of the responses are in that category.
Okay, sure, that's fine. As I said, as I spoke, it came from comments by ACC, but I realized it was more to staff. So I guess that's all I had for Ms. Richardson.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I found the comment, and you're right. I appreciate it being flagged tonight.
There are more questions for you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Isham?
Yes, Ms. Richardson. This annual report that we're discussing, that you'd like to see, in your opinion, could AMAT's themselves write this, or should this be performed by staff slash outside agency? In other words, can we be honest with ourselves if we haven't gone very far? Do we need somebody to make us honest?
I think AMAT staff is capable of it, and I don't think they've done so before today. But I think they know the system best. So I would say a senior member should be responsible for it.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, there's still more questions. Did you have any further questions, Mr. Isham, Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you for your testimony, Cheryl. For those that maybe don't know what ACC is, can you give us a little description of your organization?
Oh, thank you. Anchorage Citizens Coalition is ten years old now. We were formed in 1998 at a town meeting in this very hall. 150 people came, a lot of assembly members came that year. And we have some original members here at planning and zoning tonight. We are here to ensure that Anchorage becomes the most livable city in the nation. That's our, that's our goal. And our mission, and we call ourselves U-Race for Responsible Growth. So we recognize that Anchorage is going to grow and become a larger city, and we simply want it to be done so that we're proud to pass it on to our children. It's the kind of city that we're not embarrassed about, that we are taking advantage of our environment and our resources.
Are you a totally volunteer organization, or are you funded nationally or locally?
No, we have no national funding. We get some grant money from outside the state on occasion, and then we do get some grant money inside the state, plus we have membership donations.
Do you get funding from the municipality also, or?
We don't get funding per se, but we have had contracts in the past. You may remember, when Title 21 was first drafted, we conducted, we facilitated public review for months of the initial public draft, and that was under a municipal contract. They paid for part of our work there.
How many members do you have?
About 400 at this point.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything further for Ms. Richardson? Apparently not. Thank you very much for all the hard work you've done on this. Lots of it, hundreds of hours. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter this evening? Anyone at all? Is there absolutely no one else that wants to testify on this wonderful Public Participation Plan for AMAT's? Apparently not. Do commissioners have questions for Ms. Bernardini before I close the hearing? Ms. Pease?
Well, I wanted to re, the elevator, raise again the question I had about some of the comments submitted, which were put on a parking list or some other kind of list to be taken up later, when it seemed to me that they were fairly integral to a good public participation process.
Do you want to come forward, Ms. Bernardini?
Madam Chair, Ms. Pease, it is a very significant issue, and it is one that we've discussed internally with TAC members and staff. And the decision was that the scope of this particular plan was limited to those areas that were not already-- that were not already addressed, or that were not already, that were already addressed under policies and procedures, and if issues were raised that there were not adopted policies and procedures, we would so note those and bring them forward to the Policy Committee, and the Policy Committee would dictate whether or not they wish to, um, provide direction on, on those areas, or whether it was outside the scope of this particular plan. And it was determined through my office that, um, the scope of the public participation plan was, was more defined and not as broad as what was suggested in some of the comments from ACC and others. I don't know if that's adequate to address your concerns, but it, it simply was determined that it fell out of the parameters of this plan as laid out in the scope.
If I may ask a follow-up question? Um, is the Policy Committee not going to approve this in addition to the TAC? When you spoke, it sounded almost as if this is the TAC's task, and it's not going to the Policy Committee.
No, it will, yes, it will eventually be adopted by the Policy Committee after, um, additional review by the TAC. Once we've concluded with the public comment period, including the public hearings before this body, then we will go forward to the TAC with what recommendations have come out of this body. And then we will have a more defined or refined product to take to the Policy Committee.
Okay. Well, I guess I would suggest that, at least with this commission, we often get actions which require modifying several different documents, and it's most, um, sensible and efficient to modify the several different documents at once. So, for example, if we have a rezone and a land use map change, we look at them at once, or a, a streets and highways plan and a, a long-range transportation plan, we look at them together. And, um, I would think that to make this a really meaningful, um, project, that there would be the public participation plan and the, um, accompanying changes to make sure that it's given the, um, that it's embedded in the system in the, in the way that it should be. And, for example, another one that caught my eye was, um, comment numbered fifteen that asked that the AMATS Policies and Procedures Manual include a goal and commitment to respectfully, continuously, and authentically engage the public. And, you know, if, if you have this standalone public participation plan, but there's no way, nowhere in the Policies and Procedures Manual that says, "Thou shall consult it," or, you know, show some commitment to it, then it doesn't seem to be...
Perhaps, it may be that there's some semantics involved, because there definitely is a desire to use the Public Participation Plan as a, um, a, a document that lays out strategies for implementation within other documents. But the point, I guess, I'm trying to make is, the Public Participation Plan can't dictate what changes will be made in the LRTP, for instance. The Long Range Transportation Plan, which is a three-year commitment in developing and updating, um, has a life of its own, and the plan as you see it, the Public Participation Plan, will make recommendations on how to involve the public in that document and in that process, just as it will have recommendations for the TIP and other AMATS plans and programs. But it can't, um, there's, there's a process, a federal process by which we have to go through the Long Range Transportation Plan, and this can't supersede those requirements. Is that, I don't know if I'm making it more confusing or helping to understand any of this, but...
Yeah, I, I don't think that we can sort of fully explore this, um, tonight, but, but maybe I could, could follow up with you with a couple of these comments in particular. My main concern was, again, the public has said in its comments here, "These are issues we really care about, and we want to participate in these decisions," such as, uh, how much, how the, how the percentage of money is spent on roads versus transit. And, um, the Public Participation Plan doesn't need to say, "We're going to change it to eighty-twenty," but the Public Participation Plan might say that the public will be involved in setting that at eighty-one, uh, nineteen, or whatever.
I, I guess, Ms. Pease, that's where the problem lies. That's an excellent example of where the Policy Committee has dictated a specific policy. And this Public Participation Plan is not the vehicle in which to change an existing policy.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know how to make it any clearer, but that's, that is an exact, um, example of where there is a specific standing policy written and formalized by the Policy Committee that follows federal regulation and clarifies it at the local level. And that is, um, that's an existing formal policy. And what is requested or recommended by the, the comments received is that the public should be able to dictate what that is. We can make recommendation that when the policy is revisited, that the public have a more proactive involvement in the decision. Or we could be more explicit and say that that policy should be revisited and dictate whether that's on a, a specific timeline, or within the next three years, or before the approval of another long-range transportation plan. But to say that the Public Participation Plan will, um, be the catalyst that moves these policy decisions, I, I don't know if, if we'd have that, um, momentum.
Okay. Well, I think we just clarified that there are certain policy decisions that AMATS doesn't want public input on, and the public might differ on which those are.
I believe that's a misquote or a misstatement that I would like an opportunity to rectify. And that is, that is not what I said. I said that there was an existing standing policy. You may call it set in stone. Um, it's, it is an adopted policy by the Policy Committee. Not that we are not allowing the public to speak or to act upon something, but that "we," meaning not myself, but the Policy Committee, and believe me, I'm not on that committee, um, but that the Policy Committee has established certain criteria. And this, recommendations from this plan can certainly speak to that in changing the policy, but it can't change the policy itself, only the Policy Committee can make that change. Because it's part of...
There's other people in the queue. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reddleton, and then Mr. Eishem.
I guess to follow up on that a little bit, quite a, and appreciate your patient response to all these comments that they had in there, which is very good. But, but quite a few are in that category of postponed till later, or that this is an AMATS policy question and not subject to this plan. So, um, what, what's the procedure then? You have a list of these comments, and that'll go where? And will we get any feedback on that, and what the final...
It would be part of the implementation chapter, and in that would be recommendations made, and, and there would be, if you will, a laundry list that include a number of these, these issues. Um, they certainly would be incorporated in the plan, but they, we can't make a promise that they're suddenly going to, uh, change something overnight, but that is, as I mentioned earlier, is, is set in stone as far as being a adopted policy and procedure by the Policy Committee.
But could we expect the Policy Committee to go down that, have in one of their meetings, go down the list and discuss each of those points, and say, "Should we consider changing our policies"?
Well, that's one of the things that this participation plan is recommending, is that on an annual cycle, and we're showing, we're graphically reflecting that as a circle, that every twelve months, we, we touch on all of the various modes, all of those issues that are related to the transportation arena. And we could certainly put some of these policy issues in, along that same cyclical, um, stream, if you will, timeline, to be addressed at a specific point along that yearly Similarly to how we have, um, scheduled transit, or scheduled, um, non-motorized recreation, or, or non-motorized transportation modes, or other issues. Does that help at all?
Kind of looking for something that they'll have at one of their meetings, go down this whole list, and say, "Yeah, that makes sense. We'll change that policy," or, or not, you know, rather than spread out. Some of these are fairly fundamental.
I'm going to ask, um, Ms. Brooks to help.
Right, I think I'm hearing one thing, and Chris is hearing another. I, I would like to think that that, the list that we've put together of things that felt like they were in a policy and procedure that needed to be revisit, revisited by the committees, would be addressed item by item at a meeting, with a published agenda, with an opportunity for public comment.
Good. Thanks.
Mr. Eishem?
You may have answered my question, but my, my question is, how does the public make their desires known to this Policy Committee? I mean, is it through this format? Is it a written format? Do we vote some new people in to take their place on the AMATS Policy Committee, or what do we do?
Difficultly.
I mean, I'm curious.
The Policy Committee agendas are published. Um, you know, the public can work with the board leader to get an item on the agenda, um, work with staff to get an item on the agenda, and then they're, they're discussed in, in, in the public forum at, at the meetings.
Okay, well, as Britch Cassidy said so famously, "Who are these guys?"
Who are these guys? Two Assembly Members, the Commissioner of Department of Transportation, the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation, and...
Mayor.
And the Mayor.
Okay, so there's, what's, five people?
Yeah, and I think one of the issues related to policies and procedures is, there has been in the past, um, challenges in getting all the parties to the table, when we've got, you know, motorized roads and, and federal-owned, and, you know, state-owned facilities, and so dealing with how to divvy up the pie, but, you know, the pot of money has been a challenge. There's also money that can be used for capital, which is building roads, and then there's money that can be used for operations, and, and, you know, a transit system can get the buses they need, for example, using Cheryl's example, but it's difficult to get the operating dollars. And so, you know, how you make those transfers with, um, federal receipts, which is a lot of what AMATS deals with, is, is, is part of the issue. Um, you know, with, with the funding and, and with the splitting, having some equity amongst, um, transportation modes.
Well, my, just, my, my main concern is that there's some method for people to let the Policy Committee know what their desires are, uh, at, at sort of the, the micro level rather than a macro level, I guess.
Anyone else?
Well, I had to save my comments till last. Um, I think this document is a big improvement, so, by a long shot, over what we've had in the past. And I think in the ideal world, it, there's a lot of hope that it will work, and it works on a forward-looking basis for planning projects that we, or working with plans that we know that come up regularly. But so much of what AMATS does, and the decisions that the Policy Committee makes, don't happen in the normal cycle of things. They are constantly changing and amending on the fly. The Long Range Transportation Plan, or the, all of this stuff gets amended, and there's not adequate time to, while it's noticed, there's, there's no time to go through this normal public process for each one of these. And, and even though there's legally an opportunity for the public to come and talk to the Policy Committee, for the, for the average member of the public, it's not practical. It's in the middle of the workday. It's hard for them to take off work and to get there. And in my personal experience, Policy Committee, I, I don't really get the feeling they listen to me, even when I'm there speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission. It's like, okay, you're here, you've told us your opinion. Thank you. And, uh, that there's this bridge, there's this gap, and I've just always had this, come away with this feeling, they have a preset agenda of what they're going to do, and, uh, I've, I just really, as a citizen, don't feel like it, the input makes any difference. So, yes, we have a public participation plan because it's required by law. I hope it'll start making a difference. And I hope, I think the one way it'll start making a difference is if enough people demand that they listen, and, you know, and if there are big enough numbers of people that come out and say, "We'd really like the status quo to change, and we know you're setting policy, but you know what? It's our community. You know, would you please pay us the courtesy of listening, or receiving our input about some of the policy ideas, or maybe consider changing the policy?" And, and people don't know how. It's a good question. How do these people get on the Policy Committee? Well, I know, but, but most people don't know. And so, I think a lot of education could happen, in helping with people understand how this machine called AMATS works. How do these gurus get there? How does the Technical Advisory Committee get there? Who are they made up of? How can they help you? How can you work with them? How can you get information from them? It's like when we hear, "This document is going to go to the Technical Committee. Well, what are they going to do?" A lot of them, those folks are engineers and such. Well, help me out here. Now, are they going to, how are they going to wordsmith this? Are they going to put it all into engineering language about how it's going to fit in with whatever in their cycle of things before they send it on to the Policy Committee? I would hope these, the questions and the issues in the lists get attached as addendum or something to the, both of those groups. They deserve to see every comment, question, issue that was raised, the end. I don't want them getting, this is my personal opinion, I do not want them getting a reduced Pablum-type document where everything is tidy and has the edited, you know, version of it in the text. I want them to see the raw concerns from the people that aren't so tidy in the issues, because that's the way they're going to get the flavor of what people think. Thank you for listening to me.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything further? And I'm sorry if I'm a little crisp, but I'm being gentle. Ms. Bernardini knows I'm restrained tonight. Um, I think we're, we're ready to decide if we're going to take action tonight, or if we need to think on what we're going to do. I'm open for suggestions, Commissioners. Ms. Pease? And then Mr. Eishem?
Well, if we take action tonight, I would like to include the recommendation that the issues that were deferred... the issues that were deferred in this issue response because they didn't seem to fit inside the envelope labeled Public Participation Plan, that those issues in which the public has expressed an interest in policies or procedures, that that become some kind of a list and be the subject of a, I guess it would be a Policy Committee agenda.
Ms. Pease, we're advisory, we can do whatever we choose. Okay, well, that would, that motion would be in order, and I need someone like you to push your little button.
Thank you, Ms. Pease, and Mr. Eishem.
Yes, Madam Chair, I appreciate the detailed comment, response that Ms. Brooks and Ms. Bernardini and staff have put together. I think that we have probably covered as much detail as is appropriate, but I would like to, if we are going to pass this forward tonight to the TAC and the PAC of AMATS, I would like to, as I just mentioned, include the condition or recommendation that there be a formal, bulleted, or itemized list of issues which the public felt strongly enough to comment on, but which did not seem to fit into the envelope of this Public Participation Plan, but definitely need to be considered to support this Public Participation Plan and make it effective.
Okay.
And I guess I should have said I would move to approve the Public Participation Plan with the comments, I mean, the changes noted in our November 28 draft provided to us as E1.
Thank you. And you have seconded the motion, Mr. Eishem. Any further comments, Ms. Pease?
Just very generally that the AMATS decisions handle the largest sums of money invested in our, I think I can safely say that, invested in our community. It's extremely important that the public be involved because this is the framework or the skeleton on which our city develops, and once big projects are put in place, they affect generations, they affect, they're in place for decades. So, having the public help to guide the big picture as well as the smaller projects is really important.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton?
I'd like to offer, excuse me, a friendly amendment, that after this is rewritten to, as they've suggested they would in their response to the comments, that it go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission's AMATS Subcommittee to review before it goes to the PC.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment. To the, you mean before it goes to the Technical Advisory Committee, that's its next step?
If there's time.
Would that cause you a problem, Ms. Bernardini? No problem.
Okay.
Would that be acceptable? Okay.
That's okay with me as a second.
Thank you. Good amendment. Any further comments? I only have one additional, and I'm hoping that Ms., that our AMATS staff can listen because this isn't directly related to this, necessarily this document, but it could be. Since a lot of my frustration is how these changes that go under the radar come about and they wouldn't necessarily be affected by this plan, that we somehow have to embrace those and have a better way that the public really understands what's happening at these AMATS meetings. I'd like folks to start thinking about how we can better define our agenda items so that the average human can understand what's on the agenda. It's not adequate to just have, you know, amendment number 08-192A to the RITP. Well, what does that say to the, you know, to the average person? Nothing. And to ha, you know, and to have it, I don't care if it takes up a line or two, if it's to add like an extension of Raspberry Road or Darling Road, or to take it out, or whatever, so people know what these changes are. They might, it might make a difference whether they show up or not, or whether people from a community council might show up. So, those are just further thoughts and comments. And I would incorporate all my other earlier comments I made now. No further comments. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, that is approved. And thank you both for, Ms. Brooks and Ms. Bernardini, for your hard work on this. We have another item here, which is E2, and this is a public hearing on the Title 21 Rewrite Economic Impact Analysis document. Mr. Davis, is this your case?
Yes, Madam Chair, it is.
Okay. You may proceed.
Okay. This is a continued public hearing on case 2008-56, public hearing on the Title 21 Rewrite Economic Impact Analysis. Its intent tonight is to focus on the results and methods of several follow-up testings to the, testing reports to the main economic impact analysis report that was released in February with an addendum and summary released this past June. The overall purpose of the economic impact analysis is to investigate potential economic impacts to property owners, properties that may be impacted by, either in terms of the land value or in terms of development cost by the proposed zoning ordinance compared to the current zoning ordinance. The economic impact analysis is limited in scope to the direct impacts on the property owner and the immediate impacts on the development, so it doesn't measure the overall impacts on the community or long-term impacts on the development. The economic impact analysis is a technical study. Its purpose is to provide information for the public review process, so no action or approval is necessary by the Commission.
Okay, so, we just need to have the public hearing but not take any action?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, okay, so in the matter of case number 2008-056, the public hearing for the Title 21 Rewrite of the Economic Impact Analysis, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone present to testify? Anyone at all?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we need to extend this once again like we've done these numerous times previously?
Let me check with Mr. Davis.
We don't believe it's necessary. We're finding that this is a technical report and we're not getting a lot of response. We've, what we have tonight, what we have provided is the follow-up test results for several retail sites and low to medium-density multifamily sites. These are in addition to the tests that were conducted earlier this year, and the, the information is simply a follow-up, it's additional to what the main findings were. What we don't have for the Commission are the building costs, and we're not sure if those are going to be available. So, we're, what we have is simply a follow-up, a portion of what the main findings were, which have already been provided. There's been a public hearing on, and they don't include building cost information, and we don't expect in the near future that that information will be provided.
Okay, thank you. So, there's no need for us to continue the hearing, in your opinion?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oshomera?
I do have several questions. I do have several questions on a portion of the economic impact analysis, and so is this the appropriate place and time to ask those questions?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Specifically, I want to ask about the model test R4 to R4, and I'm wondering, before we get into some of the technical aspects of it, I'm wondering why the decision was made to look at the R4 zone, and I'm wondering how much R4 land is there in Anchorage compared to other residential zones, and what is the tax revenue for, from residential properties versus commercial zones? Because it appears that, you know, there's been more, a lot more testing done on commercial than there in, than there's only one example for residential. Those are my first questions.
Yes, I can make an attempt to answer some of those tonight, and then some of the follow-up would be in terms of how much R4 is available. I can provide that later date.
Okay.
The economic impact analysis scope is, from the start, was intended to focus on the R4 and the commercial districts. These were the districts where the district-specific standards and some of the building design standards and site development standards were anticipated to undergo the greatest change in the zoning district itself, the R4, the B3, the mixed-use districts, and the industrial districts. These were the areas where the intensity of development was much higher and where it was, anticipated that this is where the greatest change in potential economic impact would occur. So, the, this latest test is simply an additional test on the R4 district. The previous test on the R4 district focused on a very high-density type of multifamily development, which included underground parking and extra effort on the part of the applicant to provide a high-quality building. There was a concern raised at the meetings to follow up the results this past spring that the site chosen may not be representative of all types of medium-to-high multifamily, medium-to-high-density multifamily it would occur. So, the, this follow-up site represents more of a little bit lower density, it's a medium-density, we would call it, it's surface parking, the building is not as articulated, it wouldn't be probably on the market as high-end, and we wanted to see what would be the impacts to that type of site development project, which is why this apartment building was chosen. The model that we use is designed for the higher-density and commercial zoning districts, and so the focus is on the R4 district.
Is it a budget constraint that we're not able to look at lower residential densities as far as an economic impact analysis is concerned, or? I personally think that residential is a significant portion of the tax revenue that this municipality has, and therefore I, I would like to see an economic impact analysis on the lower densities.
One of the follow-up questions from this past spring was to look at the building design standards and their potential impact of buildings. Some of the potential impacts to single-family or single-family attached or lower-density residential may be primarily in the building design standards themselves. An effort was made this summer to, between the representatives of the development community and municipal staff to investigate those building design standards. We believe that those may be the area where there is the greatest change for the lower-density districts. Other standards in the R1 or the R2 districts, in the districts, the district standards themselves weren't changing as much as some of the standards that we were looking at in the R4 and the, and the commercial mixed-use districts. So, we focused, we did focus our time and resources on those districts where we believe that there would be greatest impact in the, on development. And those areas, those types of development, like the lower-density, single-family, where most, where we would anticipate a greater share of the impacts would be in the building design standards, we, we did make attempts to, this, this past summer to, we being the planning department representatives of the building industry, to begin looking at some potential examples and focusing on those building design costs. However, the planning department, our model and our, our staff expertise is so focused on the site development standards that we're dependent, basically, on the development community to provide the building standard, excuse me, the building cost information. There is a building cost information component to the follow-up tests that we did provide. We continue to use that thumbnail, that rule of thumb of a 5% increase in building costs to all the retail tests and the multifamily tests. It's not, it's only a rule of thumb, and we, we unfortunately don't have that, that part of the analysis refined from this past spring.
Well, let's move on. One comment, coming from the private sector, I wish that building and site development costs only increased at 5% per annum, but I don't think that that's the case, here locally at least. On the next page, on page 2 of 11, help me understand this square footage, gross square footage per dwelling unit for residential, when you have 600, 800, 1,000, and 1,400. And then, I'm trying to understand here the bonus potential for affordable housing and for like the, the one-bedroom unit, your increase, your, you're decreasing the square-footage requirement, is that correct, between market and affordable? Is that how I would understand it in the same building?
No, I apologize. Those numbers on the far right, this happens to be a case where the model is showing, they're on page 2, far-right column, it's indicating to the reader what the dimensional assumptions were for each of those apartment units, that the model used then to basically calculate the size of the building, the gross floor area of the building. It then used that gross floor area number in later calculations of standards. And so, what you're seeing there isn't a requirement or a change in requirements, it's simply showing the assumption, the dimensional assumption input into the model about just how many square feet gross floor would be added on average from a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom apartment. And that dimensional assumption can be changed. We can, we can do sensitivity tests, we can input a higher number, a lower number. Of course, no one number is going to be correct, each development will be different, but these seem to be in the range. The affordable units, that is, its intent is simply to help us calculate the potential economic impacts of the incentives that the proposed code will include for affordable housing, and so the model helps us keep track of And so the, the model helps us keep track of how many units among all the units in the development would be, we assume would be qualified as, had affordable housing. The more units that, that a development provides that are affordable as opposed to market rate, the model will pick that up and then change its calculations as to how much parking is required or, or even a potential increase in the, the density of the building would be allowed.
Okay. I'm still a little confused. You're going to have to bear with me for just a minute. Are the, are the market units and the affordable units the same size? Is that, is that, is that the understanding? Because as I read this chart, there's a difference. And my concern is that a different square footage for, say you take a 20-unit apartment building, there's going to be some one-bedroom units, there are going to be some two-bedroom units, there are going to be some three-bedroom units. But all the two-bedroom units are basically going to be the same size in order to get a symmetrical structure versus having some two-bedroom units be 800 square feet and some be 700 square feet. And so maybe I'm not reading the chart correctly. I, I'm just trying to determine whether or not the market units and the affordable units would be the same size as per the bedroom count.
Yes, through the chair. I think that's, that's probably a good comment on the model, that it may not be accurate to always assume that the affordable unit in a development will be smaller. Over time, in the development of the model, we did adjust the assumptions that went into the dwelling unit size. And I, I don't believe we used the affordable unit numbers in our, in this latest round of tests. So it has not affected the, the results of the, the follow-up tests, including this one. And it, it just provides the potential to use it in the future. And we, it, it could make more sense to simply make the, the unit sizes consistent between the, between the two. And now, that could be appropriate.
All right. And is that going to affect the end result here in terms of total square footage or cost? Would it seem to me that it might?
It, it really doesn't. The, the affordable unit section isn't used in this test, so it's just sort of sitting there. And it's sitting there unused. The, the overall, the overall cost figures for the development, basically what would happen is that the, the cost would be on, on the full floor, floor area of the building. And when we develop each test site, we make sure that the floor area of the building, excuse me, is accurate to what the actual development was. So if the model started, if we, for instance, would have used the affordable unit section and for whatever reason, the numbers were coming up low compared to the, the actual development, the, the size of the building outcome of the model were coming up low, we would, we would look for reasons as to why. We'd probably find it here in the affordable section and probably would adjust the affordable unit section. But it, it has not affected the results of this test and cost or size of the building. And it, but I, I would agree that we could adjust the affordable unit size upward. We haven't taken a careful look at it because we haven't used it heavily.
Moving on then to the height, the, the floor height restrictions. There is a tendency to go vertical. There is a tendency to go vertical, not just necessarily in terms of the number of stories so that you can get more units. But there's a tendency nationally to go vertical so that you would have a loft, for example. So you have a two-bedroom unit with a loft upstairs, which gives a lot of extra square footage at pretty inexpensive costs. And so can you speak to the 10-foot requirement, the 10 vertical feet requirement? And does this model allow for lofts?
Yes, through the chair. This, again, this is on the top of page three. And what it's doing, again, is it's showing the reader what the dimensional assumptions were, not necessarily requirements in the code. But among the many factors that we had to take into account were assumptions about what the dimensions of each floor of a building would be. And the 10 feet is basically a, a rule of thumb that we applied in the model about the, the height of each floor. And it's an assumption that can quickly be changed. It can be changed back down to nine or increased if the, if the intent is to test, is to test for a loft. Or alternatively, we could, one line down, there's a, a second-floor indoor mezzanine that's available as well. But this is just a, an assumption, a dimensional assumption used in the model for this particular test, and it can easily be changed. We use 10 feet. On the actual building, it may have actually been nine feet or somewhere between nine and 10, but we applied 10 feet. Whatever the case is, the, the building came in far below the, the proposed height limit for the district, so it wasn't a, a factor in the outcome of the test.
Thank you. My other question has to do with building location. And it seems to me that the proposed code is very specific about, for example, the length of, of the facade near the front lot, lot line. And it goes from 0 to 48. And then the length of facade near the side lot line, 44 to 118. And I'm just wondering, with a lot of work being done on infill, how can this code be so specific? Because isn't each property sort of unique? And there are a lot of odd-shaped properties around town. So how can this code be so specific? And doesn't it defeat its purpose by being so specific? Because it becomes very prescriptive and will limit density when one of the goals, I believe, is to be able to increase density in certain areas?
Right, through the chair. Looking at it, yes, it would appear to be very specific. The, the numbers are clearly showing a specific number of feet along the facade line. But the answer to the question is no, the code isn't being that specific. These numbers only reflect an input. The model is sensitive enough to where the, the operator actually inputs the dimensions of the building, the facade length of the building. And these are only assumptions about that particular test. It, it doesn't reflect the proposed requirement in the code. In order to determine the, the combined impact of the, the perimeter landscaping requirements and the, the, the parking requirements, requirements related to the length of the facade, for example, a sidewalk, for example, required along the length of the facade abutting of a parking lot. The model actually has to be, it needs pretty specific information about the, the proposed development. And so these, these numbers don't reflect a proposal to, to require a specific length of building or a specific dimension. They, they only, the, the number can easily be changed. They're only a number input to provide the model with enough information to calculate.
And then I, we'll just have one final question, which is about snow storage. Because this is a rental property, but similarly, properties could be condominium properties. And there is a requirement, I believe, for a snow storage. But what if the homeowners association and the covenants codes and restrictions were written in a manner so that snow storage would, so that there would be snow removal, which would then be trucked to a storage, a, a snow dump and that sort of thing? Is there going, is there an opportunity to have that situation? Because the amount of square footage required for snow storage in this model is significant.
Yes, we're exploring that option and intend to bring some recommendations to the commission soon about the snow storage section. It's one of the few subsections left in the, in the entire parking portion of the, the draft ordinance that we have not brought forward to the commission. And the model has been, on page eight, you'll see, it has been changed to reflect, it doesn't show all the potential types of snow storage, but you will find that there are, there are basically several options as to what may occur on-site. And one of those options is the removal. So we are exploring the option where if the applicant wishes to demonstrate, document that they will haul the snow, that would potentially be a change in the, the snow storage requirement. And you will see that here in the near future.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Okay, Mr. Reddleton.
Some Commissioner Yoshimura's comments point to this. One thing is going through this, it's unclear sometimes what are the assumptions you plugged in and what are cells calculated by the model, your color yellow. So I think you might add another color, so it's real easy to tell what your, just your kind of general assumptions that feed in. And then, you know, we've got this stack here, and I, and I was curious what kind of feedback you wanted from us, besides adding all the columns and making sure your math was right. Took a long time.
Yes, through the chair. The majority of the assumptions in the model are available. Basically, the main report published, provided this past February, March includes online, it includes a set of all the dimensional assumptions about each element, about buildings, about costs of each, each landscaping element, the dimensional assumption about the parking spaces, for example. Those remain, for the most part, those remain constant here. So those, most of those will still be good. There has been a change to the parking where we've made a moderate reduction in our assumption, assumed land area needed on average per parking space. And I can't think of several, of, of any others right offhand. But I think for the most part, those, those cost and dimensional assumptions remain as they were and are still available online. And I, I, I should probably have shown what changed specifically, but the parking is one that, that changed. And the, I forgot the second part of your question.
Well, just in, in general, what kind of feedback are you looking? Is this prior education? I mean, it was interesting reading it. Or is, or do you want us to give you feedback on the assumptions, the layout of your presentation?
Well, we, we do welcome any feedback that, that you can provide on the assumptions and the, the methods used to develop the findings here. We want to make these as accurate as possible and provide good information. So, for example, if affordable housing or any other element looks a little bit out of kilter, we would more than appreciate this. The, the purpose of this is, is simply for information for, for the commission and the assembly as, as the bodies deliberate about the, the proposed requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're turning over our tape. Ms. Pease.
I just have one quick comment by way of feedback to Mr. Davis. I, I think it would be very useful if you included in print your comments that you made earlier, which state that this economic analysis, as detailed as it is, doesn't attempt to measure the long-term return on investment to the private investor or the public benefits. For example, the landscaping, the trees increase the property value as they mature. The transit site that may be required under the code revision provides long-term public benefits. And it's just important, you know, when people start looking at, oh, there's an increased cost initially, it's important that they know there are some benefits that haven't been attempted to be measured. And you've, it's, that's been stated in some previous iterations, and I, you said it here verbally, but when you put these reports out, I think it would be a good footnote to continue to have in there.
Thank you. Mr. Eishem.
Yes, Mr. Davis, I have a couple of questions on the charts that you've got on page four and five of the cover, cover document. On the thing on page, the chart on page four, under the column, cost of site development, not including building, I assume that that does not include the cost of the land?
Yes, correct. None of this includes the cost of the land.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now, so then we go over to table two on page five, and there, all we're dealing with is just square footage of land that is required under the current code and the draft code. Would it be worthwhile to try and put any dollar figure on that other than to say it takes less land or more land? Or would it be possible even to put some sort of a dollar figure on that?
I think it'd be hard.
Yes, through the chair. It would be possible. We didn't include it particularly because, well, we, I guess we didn't investigate the, the per-square-foot cost of land by district or area. We assumed that it was variable enough to where, that, that to put in a single number may not, may not be representative. I've heard that in Midtown, perhaps, commercial land is anywhere from $20 to $30 per square foot. But there is enough information here to where if someone were interested in doing so, they certainly could apply that, that $25 per square foot figure and, and find out, you know, what is it, what is the actual savings or extra cost in, in the land? Another thing that could be done with this information, there is a part of the model that, that enables the, us to identify, okay, it looks like the, the proposed code in the fourth test requires a lot less land. You could either, you could either calculate the money savings by figuring out the dollar per square foot of the land, or you could, another part of the model actually calculate, well, how much more building could I put on this? And calculate the maximum building capacity, that'd be another way.
And I guess all I'm suggesting is to be useful to people that are not really experts at this, that go through these mental gymnastics of trying to figure out dollar value of land, that if you just had numbers of some kind that said, if you built it, it cost you this much, and then you save this much, because you can have a smaller lot, it, that would be kind of comparing apples to apples type of thing. So that's something you may want to consider. Although I do realize is that your land values are going to be different. And you can build, you know, an R4 on, R4 wherever in town. It may be very cheap someplace to buy the land, it may be very expensive in other places. But it, that's just something to consider where you're not having to compare square foot versus dollars.
Okay. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we have no further questions and no action is required. So we are finished with this item. Yes, thank you. But I will close the hearing. And so we are finished with this item for now. Do you want to take a break or do you want to keep going? Okay, we're, we're going to do this next case according to Mr. Eishem, and then we'll take a break. Case number, this is, originally was case number G7, but it's been moved to G1. It's case number 2008-157. The petitioner is the municipality of The petitioner is the municipality of Anchorage and it is an ordinance amending different sections of Title 21 to allow for social service facilities in various zoning districts with supplementary district standards and conditional use standards where appropriate. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Madam Chairman, if you turn to page three of the staff package, you'll find the draft ordinance that lays out all of the specific sections and citations that we are amending. Briefly, as discussed in the cover memo, we are, we see this essentially as a housekeeping proposition in that, as you know, definitions within the current Title 21 are specific and in some ways somewhat antiquated because they don't keep up with the times, if you will. But for example, we have received over the last year or two requests for use determinations from social service organizations, asking for a determination on whether a specific service that they provide is allowed within a very specific zoning district, and if so, what would we call it? And what we found is that social services tend to react to the needs of the community and it change, some of them change over time to either broaden what they do or to, in some cases perhaps, provide something new to the community, that we don't really have an adequate definition for it to fall under. So we've given you an example here of one such case where the types of, or the elements of the service that they wish to provide really didn't fall under any one given existing definition. And the example that we provided you was from the downtown soup kitchen. Currently, they provide a food service to the homeless or others in need. However, they'd like to, you know, be more responsive to the needs of that particular community in providing some other services at any given time. So as they've defined or suggested how they would like to broaden their service to the community, it had a lot of characteristics that were associated with a homeless shelter, except that it doesn't include sleeping accommodations. So what we've provided to you is a new definition for the social service facility. That definition is found on page four. And we think that it is a more general definition in scope that is somewhat generalized in description that will allow social service facilities to be creative and inventive in developing a new service to provide to the community. What it doesn't, what it is, is it does not include medical care, behavioral health counseling, or overnight accommodations. The one suggestion that we've had is that on line 10, we substitute the word people for the word citizens. And so we would make that as an amendment to you. The other thing that the ordinance does is it deletes the certain narrow definitions that we currently have in Title 21, offices and centers for family self-sufficiency service and the definition computer aided learning center. Those were one-time uses for a given location for a very specific organization. So we are recommending that those be deleted. We would establish the social service facility as a permitted principal use in the PLI B2B, B2C and the B3 zoning districts. We would establish social service facilities as a conditional use in the R3, R4, RO and the B1A zoning district. We would delete the computer aided learning center and offices and centers for family self-sufficiency from the list of uses in the PLI R3, R4, B1A, B1B, B2B, B2C and B3 zoning district. We would amend the off-street parking requirement to provide one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross building area or as determined through the provisions of 2145080W. That essentially allows the traffic engineer and the municipal official to determine what it is most similar to, and they could lower that provision if, if they were satisfied. We would also amend currently 215170, which is currently the conditional use standards for computer aided learning and facility, learning and family self-sufficiency service. So we would change the title to social service facility and then we would change the standards within that to address an authority to impose different conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission, yard requirements for used containers and required submittals. The other thing that I would add is that my understanding is if the commission recommends approval and this goes forward to the assembly and is approved, that ultimate ordinance that would be approved would come back and be folded into revisions to the revised Title 21 as are basically all of the ordinances that are amending Title 1, Title 21 in the interim of the final, final revised Title 21. I hope that wasn't too confusing.
Thank you, Ms. O'Toole. Are there questions of staff at this time? Mr. Eishem.
Ms. O'Toole, reference on page four where you changed citizens to people, I assume that that change was to ensure that the services could be provided to non-citizens also?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Weddleton.
I've got a couple of questions. How many places are classified as computer aided study and family self-sufficiency now?
I'm only aware of one.
And what is that?
What, what is it?
Yeah, I mean, what happens to that then? Does it get reclassified to this new category?
Yes. Yes, it would.
Something that worries me is in PLI, it'll be permitted and that probably usually makes sense, but PLI is all over town and it's, all kinds of uses are on that, fire stations and I guess there's PLIP for parks and so on. So it makes me nervous that this could open up to uses in places where it wouldn't be really appropriate. Is it a burden to say that for PLI, it would be a conditional use instead of permitted? Or is there something between permitted and conditional use where it could be evaluated?
Well, in the PLI, all, all uses, whether they're permitted or, whether they're a permitted principal use that is listed in the district, are required to come back through a public site plan review process to this body. So that gives the board the opportunity to look at a site-specific location.
So if someone had some ongoing use on PLI, wanted to add this use, they would have to come here to get that approved, even though it's permitted?
Those are two different questions. If there was an existing use that's already in the PLI, it depends on what that use might be and whether this is a new use that's being added to a location or it's broadening the use that's already there. And that would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis. Or it could be that there is already a conditional use that might allow this, again, to come in as a modification to the existing conditional use. I'm thinking of a habilitative care, perhaps.
You know, the example is that water tank near Service High is PLI land. And I think there was a lot of, people weren't happy about that. It went in, it turned out okay, but then a cell phone tower went up and I don't think there was any involvement or discussion of that because cell phone towers are permitted in PLI. And I think people would have preferred that that not go there, but it's just one of those side effects that can be unanticipated. So this all seems very good, but then I'm nervous about that PLI, particularly because it can be all over the place and people don't know that the lot next to them is PLI or that all of a sudden the fire station starts serving lines of people soup.
Again, the department thought that it was acceptable as a permitted use. If the board would like to make it a conditional use, you may do so.
What, so if it were a conditional use, is that, what does that involve if?
Well, if those through a public hearing process, they have to satisfy the standards for that conditional use. And it is, the difference between a site plan and a conditional use is that the site plan says the use is appropriate at any PLI location. And the conditional use says it's appropriate, it meets all the requirements and the condition, the standards of conditional use, but it may not be appropriate at that one specific location.
Okay. Ms. Pease.
Yeah, just, I wanted to clarify, I think Mr. Weddleton probably saw it, but currently the PLI does allow the offices and centers for family self-sufficiency and the computer aided learning centers as permitted uses. The other question I had for Ms. O'Toole is from page 11, what is the thinking of staff or the authors of this ordinance on why the yard requirement should be discretionary for R4 and R3 zones when these uses are proposed in R3 and R4 zones?
Madam, through the chair.
I'm looking at page lines 20 through 20, whatever, 20 to 23 and page 11.
I believe this was modified from a, an ordinance that existed in another community. And that, that requirement was, was a, was in there for yard requirements. We, we currently have, and I think when we talk about, remember this is a, this is not a service that would provide sleeping accommodation, so it's not residential in nature. It could be more akin to office or, or it could be more like a restaurant, as an example, that has broader services. We already have, this is a requirement for non-residential uses in residential districts like the RO and I believe the, perhaps the R4.
Through the chair, it seems a little, I see that, but it seems a little bit inexplicable to me, or I'm confused by the fact that if you put one of these service centers on a non-residential lot next to a residential lot, then you'll buffer it, but if you put it on a residential lot next to a residential lot, then you won't. And it would seem that, you know, if your residence in the adjoining lots residential, you're going to expect that buffering even more than if it's, you're used to a non-residential use next door. And given that R3 and R4 lots can be pretty small, 6,000 square feet, I don't understand the, why there wouldn't be the default setbacks. I know sometimes on those small lots, you maybe would have to get a waiver, but to put less protection for these uses in a residential zone than in a non-residential zone doesn't make too much sense to me.
Commissioner Pease, through the chair, the wording of that paragraph on yard requirements is that it leaves that decision up to the Planning and Zoning Commission, gives the commission the authority to alter the minimum yard requirements. It doesn't say you have to.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Wang.
I have a few questions. I hope they're not tiki-tack. Would this be intended to apply to something like a Salvation Army thrift store?
No, that would be a retail. That's retail.
As I read it, if you, given that they sell clothes, I'm just looking for the unintended consequences here.
I saw it as more as a distribution center. Yes. They're, they're giving food and/or clothing away.
Okay, but it doesn't say.
So there's not a, it's not a retail.
It does in the definition.
Does it?
Yes, it says such as food or clothing distribution.
Okay, but a store distributes clothes. I mean, I'm, shouldn't there be a restriction that it's for charitable purposes and, and along that lines? I mean, I don't know that persons in need is defined, so I don't know, I mean, in need of what, I guess is the question. I mean, I, I understand what you're trying to get at, but I can also see people taking advantage of this and putting in uses that we're not contemplating.
I think we could maybe tinker with the definition to make sure our, the intent is clear.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me that, I mean, maybe you want to be clear to exclude retail purposes or have some requirement that it be for charitable purposes. I mean, I think the term charitable purposes has sort of generally accepted meaning. I don't think persons in need has a generally accepted meaning in the law.
Would inserting the word charitable services on line nine, charitable for the word services, which provides charitable services?
I think that would help. Also, a small point would be on line eight, it refers to the, the government and, I mean, it could be a state, federal or local, so you might want to say a government agency.
Thank you.
And then another question is, would, would this be intended to apply to something like low-cost or subsidized daycare?
No, this does not include daycare.
Okay. Just because again, I don't see where that's clearly excluded in the description.
Daycare fits under an existing definition that we have.
Okay. I'm just saying that as I, as I read this, it, I mean, the, the only thing that's specified is food or clothing distribution, job or life skills counseling and the like.
But we could certainly add, even though we have other regulations that regulate day. daycare, we could also, there would be nothing to prevent us from adding daycare to the list of exclusions, so it was expressly excluded from this use.
Yeah, and I don't mean to be fussy, I'm just saying there are a lot of things that could be undertaken to advance the welfare of persons in need.
Ms. Pease?
I will round my request.
Okay. I have no further questions in the queue, so I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone that wishes to testify on the proposed ordinance changes? Anyone at all? There's anyone out in the audience, please come forward. Hearing and seeing no one, our closed public hearing. What is the desire of the commission? Mr. Earnhardt, and seconded by Mr. Isham.
In case number 2008-151, I move we approve an ordinance amending AMC Title 21 to allow social service facilities in various zoning districts with supplementary district standards and conditional use standards where appropriate with the ordinance as drafted by the department. And I'll offer amendment as soon as we have the motion on the floor.
The motion is on the floor.
Second.
By Mr. Isham.
I'd like to offer an amendment to my motion, and this is on page four. And if we're using the left-hand line numbers, it's going to be lines nine, 10, 11, and 12. It's in the definition of social service facility. And this came out of, because I don't think the term "and the like" is found anywhere in Black's Law Dictionary or any similar document. Got me going a little bit here, but I would amend this to read, actually, starting on line eight. Social service facility means a facility operated by a government, so "the" is deleted, or a nonprofit social service agency to provide services or activities to advance the welfare of people in need, including food or clothing distribution, job or life skills counseling or training, and similar activities. This use does not include medical care, behavioral health counseling, overnight accommodations, or retail facilities. And that would be the, to the extent I'm amending what was proposed by staff.
Could you repeat the sentence that begins near the end of line 11 again, please?
This use does not include medical care, behavioral health counseling, overnight accommodations, or retail facilities.
Okay. Was that change acceptable to you, Mr. Isham?
The only question I have, would you call it retail facilities or retail services?
I would call it, well, you know, retail services, I'm not sure if that means anything, and certainly I don't think that's what we're aiming at. I think we're looking to exclude a retail facility as open to the general public making sales.
Social service facility.
Yeah.
Retail activities?
That might be a good term.
Okay. Retail activities.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
All right. Mr. Whedon?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that just augments that somewhat, to change on line 10, delete food or clothing distribution, replace that with distribution of free food and clothing.
So any objection to that, Mr. Earnhardt and Mr. Isham?
Yeah, I...
Was that okay with you, Mr. Earnhardt?
I'm just, I'm trying to think, I don't know enough about these services. Are they ever, you know, does Catholic social services ever just say, you know, you got to pay 25 cents for a pair of jeans just to, you know? I don't know.
That would be retail.
But that's not the retail we're trying to avoid. I don't know. I don't see an objection to the amendment at this point.
I have no objection to that.
Okay, so that would be changed to distribution of free food or clothing. Does staff have any objection to that? I don't hear any objection.
Madam Chair? You know, I don't know enough about how these agencies conduct their service, and I guess I would not want to, well, I don't know if they...
What we don't want to have happen is have them selling items on-site to support their program.
Well, I think when you say retail activities, that covers the fact that we are not wanting them to sell food or sell clothing or whatever it might be.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Aren't there some programs or social services where a recipient might be asked to make a nominal contribution? And I wouldn't want to negate that opportunity.
I actually think that there are...
Sort of like a free will offering or something like that.
Well, it is, and where they, in some instances, they may be asked to contribute something toward the service or the goods that they're being provided. Ms. Pease, you're the next in the queue.
Yes, I'm Ms. Popik. I just wanted to say, I would pose, I'm not a lawyer, but I would pose that the word "distribution" implies some sort of charity or subsidy, and we could, you know, in our discussion here, note that that is our intent, that this is charitable distribution, as opposed to retail sales for profit raising, which is what we don't want to encourage at these sites.
Or free. If you say charitable, that allows a nominal contribution if someone wants to make it versus free.
Okay, then perhaps inserting the word charitable, such as, or including charitable food or clothing distribution. Perhaps that would capture it. Again, I'm not a lawyer.
That, I think, would probably be more appropriate than my wording.
Would that be acceptable to you, Mr. Earnhardt and Mr. Isham?
Yes.
And you, Ms. O'Toole?
Well, Madam Chairman, we've already said that on line nine, provides charitable services or activities undertaken to advance. I don't know that, I think it's redundant to...
Put charitable in there?
Throw it in there another time.
No, I don't think...
We didn't say that.
No.
We didn't say that. We should.
Well, I think we can put anything in here we want, ladies and gentlemen. So if we want to say charitable distribution of food or clothing, I think that we can. Is there a consensus amongst the group for that as an amendment? There is. All right. Mr. Whedon, are you done?
I'm done, thank you.
All right. Ms. Pease, you're still in the queue.
Yes, I wanted to propose a friendly amendment to address my concern on page 11, that the language proposed provides a landscaped buffer if these uses are on a non-residential use next to residential, but not if it's on a residential lot. And it would seem to me that if you want to buffer the house next door, you should do it whether this is on a residential or non-residential lot. So I would propose on line 20, deleting the words, "The Planning and Zoning Commission may alter the minimum yards required by the underlying zoning district," except. And then it would just read, "A use adjacent to a residential use or district shall provide a 15-foot yard," and continue that paragraph to the end.
Okay.
And my thinking is that if the lot is tight, the applicant will ask for a variance, but the intent here seems to be that if this goes in next to a house, there should be a buffer.
Okay. Mr. Earnhardt and Mr. Isham, do you object to that amendment?
Could you restate that, please?
Okay, the current wording would be, "A use adjacent to a residential use or district shall provide a 15-foot yard between the two, planted with visual enhancement landscaping," and so on.
So it just says, "A use adjacent to..."
Yes, a residential use or district.
A residential district. Or resident use or, okay, all right.
Any objection, Mr. Earnhardt?
No.
Okay.
I think it's very appropriate.
Okay, I concur. Ms. Yoshimura?
Is that 15 feet all on the side?
We can't hear you.
Is that 15 feet all on the side of the lot where the charitable use is going to be, or is that a 15-foot buffer that straddles the lot line?
I'm thinking it should be all on the lot where the charitable use is going to be. I don't think it should affect the lot adjacent to it. Ms. Pease, what is your intent?
That's my understanding. The neighbor doesn't provide his or her own landscape buffer, the use provides the buffer.
So is that the same for the, for any other use? Is it 15 feet, or are we making this a special condition?
I don't know. Ms. O'Toole, does this apply in any other instance, or just for this use?
It would be just this use.
Just this use.
Then I object to the motion, because I don't feel that a nonprofit facility should be subject to additional landscaping requirements. Am I understanding the situation correctly?
Yes. Would this make the nonprofits being treated different than other people?
It would if it is included as the standard where it's located, under 215170. Those are conditional use standards, specific to this category.
Specific to this category. But that would be specific to this conditional use.
Correct. So it's, I'm just, I'm going to read one thing here before I answer. Okay. It would apply to either a government or a nonprofit, any entity that operated one of these social service facilities as a conditional use. This would be the standard.
So there would be special requirements for the nonprofit, but the way it was originally, it would be up to the planning and zoning commission to make that determination?
Right. There are currently no standards for social service facilities, because they don't exist. So we're creating something new. These standards exist, this existing, this is a brand-new standard. This is a whole new section.
Right. Then the original, the way it was written originally, it would come before the planning and zoning commission to determine the amount of the buffer?
Madam Chair, as a conditional use, one of the standards that the Planning and Zoning Commission would evaluate is the yard requirement. And the commission, as originally suggested, could change the minimum yard requirement. And the way originally suggested is that, except the use within a non-residential district adjacent to a residential district, had to provide a larger setback, or a yard area, which would be 15 feet.
But the way we're modifying it, we're saying there will be 15 feet if you're next to a residential district or a residential use.
Right. It's not discretionary.
It's not discretionary.
Right. So I object to the motion.
Well...
Well, there's no motion.
There's no motion. This is, the main motion has been amended to include that, so, because it was agreed to as a friendly amendment. So that is going to be in the main motion. So then what that means is, you can vote against the main motion, or you could make another motion to delete that, but it's now currently, the main motion has been amended to include that. Yeah, right, because both Mr. Earnhardt and Mr. Isham agreed to that as friendly amendment.
So, Mr. Whedon?
Well, you know, I had a question on that and the interpretation of that. When I read this and it says, "Planning and Zoning Commission may alter the minimum yards," I mean, it could be increased as well, but if that's deleted, then you lose that ability, isn't that right?
That's correct. If it's absolute in here, then we lose the ability to increase it.
But as it's worded now, if this kind of activity were in some PLI that's in the middle of some neighborhood, we could say, boy, you really need some more buffer than is normally required, but that's as it's worded now, but with the change, we would not be able to do that. We would just have, in this one instance, a 15-foot buffer. Is that correct?
Isn't the question on a conditional use, if it's coming as a conditional use, we can add whatever kind of conditions we want on it. We're not losing that power by making this amendment, I don't think.
Well, it depends on how "be" is worded. Totally on how, if this first sentence is altered to where the "may" is changed, we don't have any discretion.
We can't increase those...
No, we cannot.
Okay.
Well, now, that's with the recommended change, but the way it's worded now, we could go up or down.
That's correct. The way that it's originally worded, we can go up or down. And so what is, while it doesn't address residential, there's no prohibition against the planning commission making as big a buffer as it deems as necessary when there's a residential use adjacent to it. What it says is that we can alter those minimum yard requirements, except when a use is, the use is within a non-residential district adjacent to a residential, that they shall provide at least a minimum foot. We can't go below that 15-foot when you have a non-residential adjacent to a residential. But we could go beyond that, between those two uses, and if it's residence to residence, we can make it whatever we want. And if it's residence to residence, we can make it whatever we want.
That's my reading of it.
That's my reading of it, too. Ms. Pease?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to check...I may withdraw my amendment...friendly amendment. You said that currently it's written that there shall be a minimum 15-foot yard. That is not in the standards. So what I want to find out is, if we adopt the language as proposed, does the Planning and Zoning Commission only have latitude if one of these uses is put on a residential lot in a residential district? Or would there also be latitude on a non-residential lot next to a residential district?
Ms. Atto, I'm gonna let you answer.
My understanding of the way it's worded, that the intent is that the commission has the authority to alter, meaning to increase the minimum yard requirements of whatever the underlying zone district is, except for a use that is within...so if the social service facility is in a non-residential district and it is adjacent to a residential district, it shall provide a minimum of 15 feet, but you could require more. So the non-residential adjacent to the residential is a minimum, but it does say the preceding clause allows the commission to alter. You could increase it.
Yes, I think we're about done with this.
I think so, too, but I think we need to put in...
Other people in the queue.
Okay, I think we need to put in the word "minimum" if we want to have a minimum because it says, Section A, "except that's specifically limited in this section." And if I see a 15-foot yard with no word "minimum," then I assume that the 15-foot yard is a standard that mustn't be deviated because of Section A, so...
Well, to move this along, are you withdrawing your earlier motion?
I would propose a different version.
Well, okay, well, we need to get out the big eraser.
Okay.
Are you withdrawing it?
I am, proposing to withdraw my previous friendly amendment.
Okay, Mr. Earnhardt and Mr. Eishem, I'm assuming you don't object?
No objection.
Okay. So now to paragraph B on page 11, what is your proposed minimal change?
I would put in the word "minimum" on line 22, so that...
And where would you put "minimum"?
The clause would be "Except a use within a non-residential district adjacent to a residential use or district shall provide a minimum 15-foot yard between the two."
Ms. Atto, does that sound acceptable?
That's fine.
Okay. Mr. Earnhardt and Mr. Eishem, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
And Ms. Yoshimura, as a courtesy, I'm checking in with you.
I philosophically am opposed to it, but I will vote for this resolution. I think it's important.
Thank you.
For the community.
That's great. Now, you're the next person in the queue. Ms. Yoshimura?
That's a mistake.
Okay, Mr. Earnhardt?
This is a question for staff. Looking at Section A on page 10, if it comes to us as a conditional use...now, let's just pretend we don't have Section B at all. We can still impose different setback requirements, can we not? Or increase the setback requirements? Minimum yard?
I wouldn't read it quite that way because it is specific to the size of the use...
Okay.
Specific to the hours of operation. The size of the use, that's a little disturbing. I don't know if that's referring to the size of the program within an existing facility, or if that's meaning lot size.
But we, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, absent putting in language such as in B, have no control over yard size.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm gonna offer this up as an amendment, maybe it just dies real quickly. But I would have B read "Yard requirements: The Planning and Zoning Commission may alter the minimum yards required by the under..." may increase the minimum yards required by the underlying zoning district," period, and delete the rest of B and C. C is dealt with in other parts of Title 21 as we're mending it. Because I agree philosophically with Ms. Yoshimura. I don't see adding any additional standards unless we put it specifically in the conditional uses.
Were you making a proposed amendment, Mr. Earnhardt?
Yes.
And could you repeat it? I apologize, I had been talking to Mr. Eishem.
Section B, page 11, line 20, would read "Yard requirements: The Planning and Zoning Commission may increase minimum yards required by the underlying zoning district," period, and delete the rest of B, and I'd also just delete C. C is redundant of other sections we're putting into Title 21.
And that was delete C?
Yeah. We're already screening Refuge Containers and, you know, I don't see any reason why these would be subject to any other restrictions that weren't already there.
Mr. Eishem, do you object?
I was talking to you, and I don't know what he deleted.
Well, basically, he stopped, took and altered B, so it reads "Yard requirements: The Planning and Zoning Commission may increase minimum yards required by the underlying zoning district," period. And that would be all of B and delete C.
As Ms. Pease is pointing out, and I had already, I think, figured out, I mean, this is...this only comes up if it's a conditional use anyway.
Right.
You know, most of it's just gonna go in, and it's gonna have the minimum yard standards for whatever zoning district it's in, so...
Less is best, sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no objection.
Great. Okay. I think we've just about made all the sausage we can handle tonight. Ms. Pease? No?
No, nothing else?
That is awesome. Anybody else? Last call. That's great. Okay. Well, I've already closed the hearing. We've got the motion on the floor, and now we're ready to vote. Is there...are there any comments on the motion? None? I'm going to make one. I want to comment about the issues in the PLI district, and this is for Mr. Rettleton's benefit, in part. I'm sensitive to the various uses in the PLI district, but the types of agencies that I foresee emerging by the creation of this use, this use being allowed in different zoning districts, I don't think we're gonna probably find too many in PLI zoning districts anyway because most of the clients of these types of agencies need to...first of all, they need to have easy access. So most of them get there on foot, or maybe some get there by public transportation, the people mover. And the very rare client is gonna show up in a motor vehicle, not too many of them. And now, we do have some folks that might utilize some services in these agencies that are currently...we find in PLI lands, but they're not participating in any programs from public service agencies. They're often living in homeless camps. And I happen to live near the Campbell Creek Green Belt, and we have year-round homeless camps within, oh, probably three blocks of where my house is. And they don't bother any of us, but they just camp out in the woods all year-round. And so we do have people from a variety of parts of our community that are currently living all throughout our city. And I think that we shouldn't worry about where we're going to find these social service agencies showing up. If they show up in our neighborhoods, we should welcome them. And if they...but I suspect they'll stay pretty much in the urban areas where it's easy to get to on foot. Is there any objection to this motion? I don't hear any. This motion is approved unanimously. We're going to take a break. And I'm gonna log out, so you can log in, Mr. Eishem. How do I log out? I close the door. How do I log out? Kim, how do I log out? I shut the door.
So where are we?
Oh, it's the door. There. There. I log out, so Art can log in. Yes, things are going very good for me. And I think Art signed all these resolutions for you, for these things I abstained from. Yep. And these are the two that we're sending back, yep. See, I took care of all my business. Girl! Yeah, I guess I'll go home.
They like to be very...
Yeah, I guess I'll go home.
Call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, back to order. The records show that Ms. Jones has left. We'll go ahead with the public hearings now, starting with case G1, 2008-150. This is Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility, Condition Use to Allow Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility Water Booster Station, Lancaster Subdivision, Track A, generally located east of Sand Lake Road, west of Endicutt Street, south of West 84th Avenue, and north of Diamond Boulevard. We'd like to hear the staff report, please.
Thank you. The proposal extends public sewer and water facilities in the Sand Lake area. This area is experiencing failing septic systems and deteriorating well water quality. The booster station is needed to satisfy the needed operating pressure and fire flow The project fulfills the goals and policies of the Anchorage 2020 Comprehensive Plan, and it also conforms to the standards for general conditional use. Therefore, the department recommends approval of the conditional use to allow the Sand Lake Booster Station with two conditions as outlined in staff's report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. The design consultants for the project are also available to answer questions.
Any questions?
I do, and I think it's a quick one. I was just talking with Ms. Ferguson a little bit about the 84th Street alignment. And in looking at the map, we found that there isn't an easement reserved on those lots to the north. But just trying to make sure that there isn't a need for a future road along 84th, I wondered if there's any information as to where Big Bend Drive will come out onto Sand Lake Road, if it will. And the reason I ask this is, if this area is gonna be developed as soccer fields, there probably is gonna be...there may be a need for an intersection, and it probably should align up with wherever the road...perpendicular road comes in on the other side. So I'm trying to figure out where that would be.
Ms. Pease, I don't know where that future intersection may be for Big Bend. Is that Big Bend Loop that you were speaking of where that will come out onto Sand Lake Road?
I'm looking, yes. I'm looking at page seven in our packet, and Big Bend is only partly drawn. And it may be that there are no roads coming up out of the pit, and maybe there's a slope issue, and we don't have to worry about it at all.
Right. That may be case, and I really can't foresee where that intersection may take place.
Okay, maybe the petitioners will have any indication. That is my only question slash concern, is that if there's going to be an intersection for access out of the subdivision, would it be at 84th?
Ms. Ferguson, is there room for 84th to go through? I mean, is this setback or not? I'm not clear by Ms. Pease. So we're not gonna be able to develop 84th?
There...I checked with the traffic department, and they have no plans to extend 84th Avenue. Should something happen in the far, far, far off future, this booster station would probably need to be set back another 10 feet.
Is there any reason we can't just do that now in case we want to use 84th?
I would put that question to AWU to see if there's any problem with moving it back an additional 10 feet.
And the second question, this may also go to AWU. Why put this right next to Sand Lake Road versus set it back in the lot where it can be landscaped, where it can be, you know, incorporated in the neighborhood? It's not right out there on the visual intersection, visual path.
Mr. Earnhardt, I'll take a stab at this, but it may be, one, if they set it back, they acquire more easement from ASG, which increases the cost. It also means a longer access for them, and it takes away more space from the potential soccer fields in that area.
I'll ask the questions of AWU, or maybe they can cover it in their presentation.
Okay, Ms. Yoshimura?
Ms. Ferguson, you and I have had a brief conversation, so I just want to clarify. Is this...oh. Is this a sale that's occurring, or is this an easement that's being granted? I'm confused by that. And the petition side is identified as being 35 acres, but that's not what's being acquired, is it? It's just the lot for the booster station?
Ms. Yoshimura, that's correct. The entire site is just a little bit over 39 acres. If you turn to page 26 of your packet, under final ownership, it says "The site is currently owned by Anchorage Sand and Gravel. Once the proposed easement is acquired, Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility Once the proposed easement is acquired, Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility will be the final owner and will operate and maintain the facility. So they are purchasing the easement from ASNG.
Okay, and so then there's a lease fee associated, I'm assuming, with that. With that, it's not an ownership, it's a long-term lease arrangement? And is it the entire 39 acres?
No, no, they're only...
The area?
Exactly, just that small area that they need for the booster station.
Okay.
And I believe they will take ownership of it.
Ownership of the easement?
Yes.
Not in a fee simple capacity, is that correct?
Right, I believe it's ownership of the easement.
Okay. Which would have in perpetuity or a length of time? Is it like a ground lease?
I couldn't answer that question. AWU could answer that.
Perhaps the petitioner can answer that question. And then, hopefully, the petitioner can also address the issue of why the alternative site was not selected that was mentioned in the comments. Thank you.
Ms. Peace.
I just wanted to ask AWU when they come up to address whether the placement of the line along the 84th alignment would also, is it as proposed, placed to allow future development of 84th, should that become necessary?
Okay, any further questions for staff, and then we'll go to the petitioner. Okay, before we start, just the rules, basically, petitioner has 10 minutes. Representative groups such as community councils, PTAs have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. So let's go here from the petitioner now.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. My name is David Pressek. I work for a company called MWH, and I'm a contract project manager for AWU. With me tonight is Charles Wickler, who is the project engineer for Landsbury Associates, the designers for this project. As Ms. Ferguson said, we have both a water and sewer project there utilities that are proposed for the Backburn extensions to bring these utilities closer to these sites where folks are having the most difficulties with water quality from laws as well as failing septic. The project does have a substantial amount of grant funding available to help offset the cost to bring these utilities closer to the homes that are in need. The reason that we're before you is for the water booster station, which is to elevate the pressure as well as to provide for fire flows to this specific area. And we have worked very closely with the community councils as well as the community itself within the Sand Lake area that would be impacted by this project. We've held the two open houses with folks, as well as been presenting to the community council about this project as we've gone along through the process. The water booster station, while the site was selected based on hydraulic modeling as well as specifically in the location that it had run in, was in discussions that we've had with the neighborhood in that going into what's considered a park area on the northerly side of where 84th would have been, should it have been plotted through there. 84th was not, is not plotted through there. We've had discussions with PMNE at the municipality about their interest for the extension of 84th. And at this time, we're in the process of acquiring an easement with ASNG for the placement of the water line through this area and for a width of approximately 45 feet. And it is for utility purposes only. The neighborhood has been very adamant about their interest in not seeing a road get advanced through this area, and this is specifically to address utilities, not roadways. When we have talked to PMNE with regards to their interest to extend roadway through this area, they have no plans in their foreseeable future. We are in interest to participate in this project in acquiring additional easement for roadway purposes or anything like that. But it's certainly something that we did speak to them about. And it's, the question was with regards to the site selection and the alternative of not selecting the park land site is addressed on page 25 and item three under alternative two. When we looked at that, and there were some waiting factors of what was considered for that booster station to not be selected to go on the northerly side of where 84th would have been plotted, should it have gone through that specific area. The sewer project will go and run up 80th, tie into a sewer at the bottom of the hill, and extending up toward Sand Lake. The water project will connect to a water pipe at Jade and 88th, and run down Jade Street to 84th, and then turn westerly and then run out to Sand Lake, which is where it will connect to a 30-inch water line, and that's where the booster station will be going. And primarily, we're bringing a great volume of water to that location, or there's a great volume of water at that location, but we'd have to increase its pressure to increase its operating ability to be able to supply the neighborhood, get water up to the second story residence and those types of things. And while the booster station is specifically going to that end. However, we will connect to a water line with Jade and 88th as well, but it's a much smaller diameter pipe at that location, which should provide for circulation through that area. I think that I would reserve the rest of my time if there should be for any other comments that may have, or...
You've got four minutes and 40 seconds left, so... Okay, are there any specific questions from the members of the commission right now? Or do we want to hold questions till we get any other public testimony?
I have a question.
Okay, Nancy.
Just really quickly, in talking with PMNE, was there any discussion of where an intersection might be and whether any road's going to come up out of the West Park pit?
They did not indicate any location at all where there is any concerns about that. And we actually spent a fair amount of time, Sand Lake Road is actually administered through ADAT, and so we spent a fair bit of time with their traffic folks as well, considering where that driveway location would be best to not interfere with competing intersections and those types of things. And they had nothing that they were giving toward what we're planning for at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Let the record show that Mr. Phelps left at 9:30. He has to catch a flight down to Juneau. Ms. Yashimura.
Going back to the paragraph on page 25, if we could just explore that a little bit more about alternative two. However, this site would need to be, it says, "This site also has adequate space to accommodate the site layout facility and maintenance activities." However, this site would need to be cleared and graded to improve the site accessibility and increase the available site distance. So I need to, I'd like a little bit more information about that. The site that's needed for this booster station is approximately 6,400 square feet. Is that correct? Did I read that somewhere? It's 6,400 square feet. So clearing an acre of land costs about $15,000. So I don't think that the fact that it needed to be cleared should be a detriment. And then, and graded, so what do you mean by graded? Is there a varying topography here? Is there a steep slope, or is it fairly level? I mean, all sites usually need to be graded, so is, what about that site?
That particular site is very highly vegetated, whereas the location on the other side of where 84th would have gone through, if I may. Right. There are vegetation that is in there. And so, the vegetation was a concern for vehicles to pull out onto Sand Lake, and from a visibility side of how things were going to be. For the grading that would be involved with that, what we looked at was, we had done soil borings along this site to be able to determine what the bearing capacities were of the soils. And what we found was that although we did not go onto the municipality of Anchorage property, which is where, who owns that property, what they call the Edna Fisk Memorial Park, we did not go onto that to do soil borings itself. We found that satisfactory soils were available to be able to support this, to support this structure. The other part of it that we really didn't talk a lot about here was in the community meetings that we had, the interest that the community had for being able to preserve their green space, or what they considered their green space for this park area itself.
How is the park used now? Is it just vacant property? Are there trails there? Is there plate equipment? Is there any improvements to this park area, or is it just virgin land?
Well, it's, it's, there's a lot of trees that are within it. I would say that there are trails, but it's four lots, yeah, four lots, but are all together, all connected within that entire area. At least in the meeting at the community council and in the open houses, Mrs. Enhart, that they, she would rather have not seen disturbed.
You know, I can really appreciate that, because every tree does have a value. My concern is, is that AWU has had significant rate increases and proposed rate increases. And so, even though this body doesn't look at the economics or the financial requirements or conditions of a deal, it concerns me that there is public land that is available that this booster station could go on. And adjacent to that property is a private property that is, that you're going to pay, I would assume, a fairly handsome easement cost on an annual or a monthly basis for. And you could pay that same amount of money to improve the park and give it to Parks and Rec, which is desperately always looking for money. So I just question the rationale behind it. I am supportive of water and sewer coming to this area, but I wish the, this site, the site to the north, had been further explored both financially and as the possibility of a site. Because I do know that parks are in desperate need of funding and maintenance, and it seems like we're throwing away an opportunity here. Over 6,400 square feet. Thank you.
Ms. Enhart.
I've got, you know, two questions that I raised before. One, is there any problem with moving this back a little bit so we do have that room for 84th? You know, no one's envisioning using 84th today, but no one envisioned most of the roads that are in Anchorage right now. And then the second question is, why not, we're in the northwest corner of this large chunk of land, is the northeast corner available, or perhaps Lot 27 in the Edna Fisk Memorial Park? With the thought, getting it off of Sand Lake Road? And I'm sure where, you know, an appropriate place is for a booster station, but it seems to be putting it behind trees and inward is a little bit more appropriate than putting it outward on the main thoroughfare.
The answer to the first question about can we move further back away from 84th, was not without acquiring additional easement. Certainly, certainly if you can pay more for additional easement, it can move to several locations. Obviously, we're very interested to make sure that we're not so far off the road that we increase our maintenance costs or snowplowing and those types of efforts that we would have in order to maintain this specific site. And that is certainly one of the considerations that we try to provide for within the facility. But we do have an interest to have the booster station reasonably close to Sand Lake, primarily because of the access for the water from the 30-inch moon and its proximity coming into the booster station. I guess you could move the booster station further to the east. However, you'd have to have larger pipes in order to bring that same volume of water to that. And so, we're at least trying to be able to look at how far that access is away from the 30-inch water line that we're tying into at Sand Lake. It runs from Diamond toward Raspberry, and that's the pipe that we're connecting to. So from that proximity toward its desire to be close to Sand Lake, that's what certainly is, is one of the interests that's there.
Okay, so we've got a big 30-inch on Sand Lake Road, this going down 84th and down Jade, is the smaller line that brings it to customers, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's a 30-inch line that runs up Diamond and then turns and goes on Sand Lake toward Raspberry and toward the reservoirs up there. And so, it's a fairly large area, and it's what was in the master plan.
Okay. And then we've got, is this kind of a follow-up on moving away from 84th, allowing it to have a right-of-way there? Are there any physical constraints there? Because I know part of that is a gravel pit. I mean, can you just, can you move it south 20 feet, or what do you need for that road? Or is that...
Well, where you see on the map, it shows waterline extension. What we're in the process of purchasing is a utility easement. It doesn't preclude a road easement being purchased by the municipality in the future. This is only a utility easement that we're acquiring to be able to put the pipes in the ground.
But the booster station, as I understand it right now...
Yes.
Would block the road easement unless we move it south a little bit to allow for that.
Yes.
But we're talking pretty nominal amounts, whether it's 20 feet or even 40 feet. It's not a whole lot of land moving this booster station south. Is there any other, is there any other physical constraint or something else that takes that out of the picture?
It'd be just purchasing additional easement so that this whole project could shift to the south.
But it doesn't sound like that's a tremendous...
Well, it's certainly an expense to the project. They all have their, they all have their costs.
I'm looking at four streets that come to dead ends without circles. Clearly, it's, and there's going to be more development. We don't know what shape that's going to take, so... Okay, I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Any further questions for AWU? Okay, fine. Sir, you have four minutes and 40 seconds, and we'll see if we've got any. Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Last call, if anybody wishing to testify. Okay, fine. Sir, if you'd come back up here? Okay, you've got four minutes and 40 seconds for any rebuttal.
I think that hopefully we've been able to present in the application, the process that we've gone through. I guess the most important thing was, we've been working pretty closely with the community council as well as with the neighborhood that was going to be impacted by this. There was a lot of discussion about 84th, and people in question whether we were going to be... And people in question whether we were going to be building a maintenance road along the route that the water line would take. People who were looking for assurances, then we would not be constructing that roadway through there. And certainly, and as our business is water and sewer, we're not in the road building business, although we're cognizant of what other folks might be interested in, in meeting with, with the municipality, with the PMNE group. And there's discussions with them and their interest in not extending this at this time. It was at least part of the consideration. It was we, as we met with folks out there, people who were looking for assurances that we weren't in the process of trying to acquire easement more than what we needed for water and sewer for this, for the project. And at this, at this point, we actually don't have enough, or we have, the sewer is only on Eightieth, but we have enough easement to ultimately extend sewer along there to be able to serve folks. And it's certainly been one of the things that we talked about for a very extended time through the process, meeting with Sand Lake, so. But with that, I just thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this.
Fine, I think we've got some questions for you now. Okay, Mr. Waddleton.
Who does this project benefit? Is it just the homes that are kind of boxed in by Sand Lake, Eightieth, Endicott, and Eighty-Fourth? Is this...
If I may, I'm going to pick the map and it's a pretty easy... The water line is a drainage and drainage and runs along here, up here. Seacliff and this area are on the roadside here. And this is all we all have in depth. And so, the positive benefits of water and sewer, which is here, either the design, gives the water to drive it through ultimately to, and that, and water as well. So, there's actually two benefits. There's been petitions in the past to be able to look at the extension of utilities, but it's been very, very expensive to be able to do that because they were so far away. This is an effort to get that backbone utility closer to serve these homes. So, it's, there is benefit not only in that Endicott, Wilcox, Seaview area, but also if you get down toward Eightieth and Jade, and that area along Jade Street as well, both to the west as well as to the east.
So, it says in here that there's problems with wells and septic. Five septics have failed out of two-hundred-some homes, or is a hundred of them are failing and all the wells are bad? What are we talking here?
From the, from the water side, this is an area that there's been a demonstrated concern because of arsenic. What's, what a lot of folks are finding, they have pride of wells and they're not getting them tested because of the concern or fear that they have for if they come back positive, maybe they might be losing the right to be able to, to replace it, to do work on it. There's also some community wells that are also in this area. And so, the, in the community council in this area, there's, they actually just started a program to be able to have an anonymous testing go on for several of these folks. It's been a meeting that just actually occurred in October, and folks are beginning that process. However, when it has been upon sale, folks have had some problems and issues with regards to arsenic. From a septic side, what I can't show you very closely, but if you could see from the photograph of the, of the neighborhood, these are very small lots. And so, the problem is, is that people are not able to either make improvements onto their homes because their septic isn't large enough to be able to handle it, or it is in such a condition that they wouldn't be allowed to do any work on their homes. The other part of it is, is that they are, they are failing and impacting the properties next to them. Primarily, a lot of this is coming out through folks either trying to sell their home or refinance their homes.
But you've, there have been, some number, it didn't specify how many, attempts to bring this into the AWWU system, but they've all failed. But despite that, you've continued to put money into bringing this backbone towards this neighborhood that says they don't want it. Is that correct?
I would, I don't, I don't necessarily think I agree with that one. This, generally, the support of the neighborhood has been in support of the project, provided that the cost is not going to be one that's going to be so burdensome. In this project, AWWU will not require people to connect to this pipeline. That, that's not, that's not something they will, will be able, you know, will do. They can choose or elect to connect. And generally, for the folks that currently live along the alignment where the project is proposed, a little over fifty percent have responded in favor of requesting that a connection be provided for, for them at the time that this is being constructed. And as it's being constructed, folks can come in at a later date if they should choose to connect to it. But we're not finding, either through the community councils and through our open houses, that there is a general interest to not have these utilities extended to this area, to provide a closer proximity so that they might be able to extend further up to their streets so that they don't have so far to go as an option. The greatest concern has been the cost and what it might cost them, and should there be other grants that may be available in the future. But that's unknown. We just, we don't know where, the funding and support will go for initiatives that come through the Clean Water Act or through direct appropriations that might become available. But in general, the majority of the people have spoken in favor of the project.
What would it cost these homes to hook up?
Pardon?
What would it cost these homes to hook up, roughly?
It depends on the square foot area for each of the homes.
Square foot of lots, so these are pretty uniform in this area for most of them, it's about a hundred and sixty, but you've got it, I guess, fairly small because you've got seven and a half million dollar project, six point two millions in grams. So, it's one point three million dollars for a couple hundred homes, right?
But I don't think it's a couple hundred. I think, I'd have to take a look at it there to see what that density is exactly for the homes that are currently along that alignment.
Thank you. I'm a hillsideer, so I might explain my nervousness. Thanks.
Question actually, which was, how much will it cost the homeowners to hook up?
If I were to give you a ballpark number as to what that connection is, and primarily what that cost that we look at is the, is the cost to offset the one point three million dollars. They, the folks, the grant, the grant portion of the six point two million dollars that's there either through EPA grant or through direct appropriation is taken out of the equation. So then, it's the recovery of the one point three million dollars of debt that's required to be able to go in. And the, the cost for that debt service and that connection is generally for some of the smaller lots is ten thousand dollars in that, in that range.
And that's a voluntary hookup? That's not an assessment against the property?
The assessment will always be against the property. Well, the assessment will always be there, but the, it will, it cannot be, it cannot be charged or folks don't have to pay it unless they connect to that pipe.
What about when they go to sell their property? Then are they forced to hook up?
The, AWWU does not have that requirement. Now, there may be lending institutions that may require that, but, but AWWU does not have that as a requirement.
I think that is a lending institution. That would be if public water was available and there was an assessment, then I think the lending institution would require that assessment to be paid and for that property to hook up.
Folks have been able to do, have been able to replace septics that have lived with, you know, with, in close proximity to sewer lines, and so I, I'm not...
Close proximity is a little different than in your front yard. Yeah.
That's, that's the understanding, yeah.
Ms. Pease.
I guess this might be to Ms. Ferguson, but the petitioner might have comments too. I'm still concerned about the fact that there are comments in here from state noting the need to complete the road grid, and there's nothing in writing from PMNE that says we never foresee the need to extend Eighty-Fourth. And the question part of my remarks is, Ms. Ferguson, I'm, I'm looking at this diagram on page, or effort on page eight, trying to figure out which of these roads are developed. It looks to me as if Seacliff and Seaview Street have a six-hundred-foot cul-de-sac which ends at Eighty-Fourth, and Wilcox Street would amount to a twelve-hundred-foot cul-de-sac ending at Eighty-Fourth. And then, looking over to the east of the property, in the Eighty-Fourth, Eighty-Sixth area, I see lots of three-hundred-foot lots that don't appear to be developed. So, with, and then the possibility of fields in here, you know, I'm thinking there would need to be some access to this site from these surrounding areas. So, with all that in mind, I guess how can we, how can we really conclude that Eighty-Fourth won't be needed? Especially with those long cul-de-sacs, don't those exceed municipal standards for this density of development? And again, looking at the north, at Seacliff, Seaview, and Wilcox. Well, it's as if Wilcox is twelve-hundred, yeah.
In answer to your question, Ms. Pease, I didn't get anything from the traffic department that, other than when I went up and spoke to them and they said they, I spoke to Lee Coop, and he said that the, the traffic department had no thought to extending Eighty-Fourth Avenue. I didn't get it in writing from him on that issue. The only issue here is that would preclude that road going through what might be the booster station if it were set back an additional ten feet, that would take care of that future need should it ever arise. But when we looked at the plot for track to A of Lancaster subdivision, and it showed that development to the north, there is no thirty-foot right-of-way that was plotted as part of that development. There are eight lots along there. Two of those lots are part of the park and six of them are not. They're already developed as residential homes. To make this road go through, they would require a thirty-foot take from those existing homes and then a thirty-foot right-of-way on to track to A. It's very unlikely that the city is going to require a, and go in and do a thirty-foot take of those existing residential properties. I think the homeowners would scream bloody murder if they're going to go in and take thirty feet of their lots for a roadway.
Would there be any chance that the city would, and if it's got to buy the right-of-way, what would be the difference between it buying sixty feet from AS and G versus thirty from the homeowners north and thirty from AS and G? And again, I don't doubt that there's a right-of-way problem there, but I'm just looking at the length of the cul-de-sacs and the fact that this is, might be a soccer field complex drawing people from the neighborhood and thinking the city may need that. And I guess, I understand the booster station probably could be moved a little bit, but what about the waterway, the main? I don't know whether you can build a road over a water main.
I think the other part of that, AS and G probably at that point won't own this anymore. It probably would have been acquired by the Parks Department. And yes, it's feasible that the whole sixty-foot right-of-way that's needed to extend that road could be taken from the soccer field. It's, it's, it's an unknown at this point. But Mr. Prusak could answer the question about the water line under, possibly under, under a road.
Okay.
Traditionally, that's many times where the water lines are underneath roads and sewer lines as well.
Okay.
Okay, fine, thank you, sir. We'll close.
Thank you.
Close the hearing. The case now rests with the commission, and I'll take a positive motion for approval.
I'm moving case number two thousand eight one five zero to approve a conditional use for Sand Lake Water Booster Station, subjects to conditions one and two in the packet and subject to the additional condition that a sixty-foot setback from the north side of the property be left open for future development of a road if necessary.
Okay, that's been the second amendment, Ms. Pease. You speak to your motion, Mr. Unhart.
My, my only concern is, is I voiced earlier that maybe it'd be set back a little bit more from Sand Lake Road, although I understand, you know, the concern of the residents. We certainly don't want to put it in the middle where it's just going to muck up any kind of development. The compromise, I guess, is leaving it by Sand Lake as opposed to having a road that AWWU has to maintain all the way along what would be Eighty-Fourth Avenue. We'd have to go four blocks in to go to that northwest corner. I think the residents aren't going to like that, and AWWU won't like that. And, you know, maybe twenty years from now, we'll kind of wish we had done it, but it's, it's nominal, so. The current location, as long as we leave that sixty feet for the potential of Eighty-Fourth, I'm comfortable with.
Any further discussions? Yes, Ms. Pease.
One question and then one point. On condition number two, it just says an easement shall be filed. Do we need to specify that this is an easement for the Sand Lake Water Booster Station? Because I don't think we're approving the easement for the water main. Are we? No. Excuse me, just for the booster station. So I'd make a friendly amendment that we should say an easement for the Sand Lake Water Booster Station.
No objection.
Okay. And through the chair, I have one comment, and that is, I would like our findings to reflect, if there are no objections, that the commission did not receive convincing proof that there would never be a need for the extension of Eighty-Fourth Street, although there's no need now. We did observe that there are, there are lengthy cul-de-sacs, there is undeveloped property to the east of the subject property, and there may be a need for coordinated access from these neighborhoods, coordinated direct access from these neighborhoods to the future soccer or recreation fields on the site. So, for that reason, we, we did not rule out the possibility that Eighty-Fourth might be constructed, at least as a pedestrian easement or something in the future.
Any further comment? Mr. Wang.
I guess just a general observation that, you know, we're making changes to something that nobody really was raising significant objections to. This makes me a little uncomfortable to change things that nobody was really complaining about to begin with. So, other than that discomfort, I mean, we're painting on a blank slate, so to speak, and it probably doesn't make a really material difference, but where you have sort of a consensus that seems to have evolved about some... have sort of a consensus, uh, that seems to have evolved about something that maybe isn't perfect, but reflects some kind of compromise to change it at this stage without a lot of notice does give me some pause.
Any further, uh, Mr. Earnhardt?
I, I would just like to add for the record, um, I, I don't think there is a real consensus. No one in the neighborhood is objected to not being an easement on 84th because they're backing on undeveloped land and they don't want a road there. But we're talking six properties. We're not talking the neighborhood, thinking 20 years from now. Um, and, you know, I, I think it's, it's, uh, um, Department of Transportation has indicated some concerns that this hasn't been plotted out. Um, you know, there are numerous examples in Anchorage of where someone says, "Well, we're not using it now, let's put a building here," and then later have regretted it. And I've always, I've had it as a policy, um, before being on this board with Ziva. I remember someone wanted to just build up to the road easement that, really, right now, I don't think they're ever going to build that road behind Trailer Craft and they only wanted two more feet, but we didn't let them build up to it. They had to have the setback, you know? It's, it's, in totally take that off the map and say, "We're not going to build it," I'm always concerned because we don't know what the future holds.
Any further comments? Okay, I, I get to make the last comment. I will be, uh, supporting this and I agree that we need to leave that easement there because we don't know what's going to happen on 84th and there was not a decent answer to that concern as expressed by DOT. So I think it's wise for us to, uh, force, force, force the easement to exist and, uh, AWU is a, is a city municipality agency and, you know, we need to make sure that they do things right so that we don't have stuff sitting in the middle of places like we had with the last time with the AWU when we had to put some control panels or something that were across the street or whatever that was. It happened, you know, about a month or so ago. So I, I think that we're, this is the right decision. So, uh, is there any objection? It's approved unanimously. Okay, we're now going to move on to case, uh, 2008-151, AWU, zoning conditional use for a utility substation, uh, to allow Anchorage AWU, um, pressure-reducing valve substation at the Nickview Estate subdivision track D generally located in Peters Creek, west of Deer Park Drive, north of where Armistock Drive dead ends. So we could hear from staff, please.
Pen staff member Angela Chambers wrote this case. I will be presenting it for her tonight in her absence. The petitioner proposes to remove an existing older water, older water reservoir and place a smaller pressure-reducing valve, a PRV station on the site. The purpose of this project is to connect the Nickview Estates water system with the Tablelands subdivision. Nickview Estates is located within a separate water pressure zone than that in the Tablelands and Glenview Estates subdivisions. To accommodate these pressure zones, two PRVs will be installed at the connection points of the intertie. One of the two will be located underground and thus does not require a conditional use. The second PRV will be above ground at the petition site and within a 10, and will be housed within a 10-foot by 14-foot structure. The project furthers the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Development Plan and also conforms to the standards for a general conditional use. The existing reservoir and booster station will be removed and the PRV will be located in that area. The existing fence will be removed. Landscaping will screen the facility from the closest residential lots and the majority of, of the existing vegetation will remain. The department recommends approval of the requested conditional use for the PR, for the pressure-reducing valve station with the three conditions as outlined in the staff report. Staff adds a fourth condition which reads, "Provide moose fencing around the birch trees." That is, the one birch tree that will be added and also there are existing, uh, birch trees there that will also be fenced. Um, I spoke with the design consultants and they had also, uh, planned to include the moose fencing.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, questions for, uh, staff? Okay, petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Stephen Ness. I'm, uh, the project manager for Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility. Um, for those of you, I've presented before, uh, you know, I like to try to keep my comments brief. Um, Anchorage Water and Wastewater Utility acquired the Nickview Water System in 1996. When, uh, AWU originally acquired the system, there was less than a dozen homes connected and being served by the system. Now there's in excess of 70 homes being served by the system. Um, there's issues with the water well there and capabilities for maintaining flow. Currently, only pumps at about 55 gallons per minute. Um, the reservoir that is there has a 60,000-gallon, uh, storage capacity, but because of fire flow requirements, we're unable to meet fire flow to that neighborhood. Um, it does have fire hydrants in it, but we have sacked them. Um, it's been the goal of AWU for a long period of time to connect Nickview in with the rest of AWU's water distribution system until the Tablelands subdivision was completed a number of years ago. It really wasn't economical to do it. Um, back in 2003, um, after we had a couple real bad years there with, uh, low water pressure, a lot of homeowners complaining about new water pressure, um, and other system issues, uh, we really undertook, uh, the project to connect it in with Tablelands. Um, right now, what you have before use to approve a conditional use permit for an existing site that has a water reservoir on it, there's a picture in your packet of what that reservoir and booster pump station look like. Um, we plan on getting rid of the, the silver bullet, if you will, and, uh, replacing it with more of a shed-type facility. Um, the reason that we have it above ground at this location instead of below ground like our other location up near Tablelands is simply that, you know, we, we do have an aging look for us as well and accessibility and nobody really likes to climb down into holes if we don't have to. It makes it easier for maintenance and operation purposes. And so we try to build all our facilities above ground when possible and this is an area where we have, uh, title the property and have land in which we can build a facility above ground. Um, I'd entertain any questions you may have. Um, there's any, that's my-
Okay, you've got about 7:36 left over. Very good. Okay, any questions for Mr. Prusak? Okay, thank you. Take your seat. Um, public hearing is open. Is there anybody that wishes to testify in this case? Is there anybody that wishes to testify? Last call to testify. Okay, sir, if you'd come back up. Okay, you've got seven minutes and 30 seconds. You can wrap up anything you want.
The, the landscape issues, uh, we have proposed for basic landscaping around the facility. We've tried to keep it minimal to tie into the rest of the neighborhood. Um, the moose protection fencing was added in the final landscape plans. It's not going to be around the whole entire site. It's going to be each individual tree, um, because there's a number of spruce trees as well and the, the birch trees are limited. Um, so that is proposed and we do accept that fourth condition to the conditional use permit as, uh, proposed by Ms. Ferguson. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? None. Okay. Hearing is closed. Matter now rests with the commission. Accept a positive motion for approval. Nancy, I see you've-
Yes, in the matter of case 2008-151, I move for approval of the, um, utility substation with the conditions noted in our packet on pages eight and nine and with the fourth condition to provide moose fencing around the birch trees.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Wang. Uh, Ms. Pease, you going to speak to your motion?
Yes, just very quickly, um, the neighborhood will be greatly improved by the, um, tie-in of the two water systems, um, in terms of, of reliability and removal of the rather unsightly current water tank, um, will be an aesthetic addition and the new booster station is compact and residential-looking and so it looks as if the community really benefits.
Any further comments from the commission? Any objection? Passes unanimously. Uh, we'll now move on to, uh, case 2008-130 and 2008-
Yeah, I've been excused from participation, so I'll take my leave.
We've got a, uh, short board right now. Uh, means that if one person drops out-
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with All Engineers, representing the petitioners tonight on both number three and number four cases tonight, uh, the birch wood gravel extraction and rezone. Um, we felt comfortable going forward with six members tonight, thinking that Mr. Frederick was gone and we had two conflicts, but, um, when Mr. Phelps, um, indicated he was leaving, that was a surprise to us and I think everybody else in the crowd. So we are going to ask for, uh, another date, uh, one in the future that maybe you have some idea is going to be, uh, uh, at least have more members here, um, that don't have conflicts, uh, on our project. So we will, uh, we will get emails out to the community council and the neighbors that were here and some that are still here. Um, and I feel bad for them that they sat here as long as they did. So, I don't know if you knew if Mr. Phelps was actually leaving or not, but-
No.
Okay, well.
I mean, he, he presented me a thing about 10 minutes before he left, as by the way, I got a 9:30 flight to catch.
Um, because it, it did create a situation where we had a minimum board, so. With that, I'd entertain any offers of a time, whether it be in December. Um, this is a relatively time-sensitive project. We've already delayed it, uh, at least once to combine the hearings together for the benefit of the community. Um, it was originally up in October and, uh, we did slide it till today. And, um, with that note, um, we need to have a wheelsprur under construction April 1st into the site and we have a rezone that has to go on to the assembly and some of you know how long that can take.
Staff, what, what does it look like for perhaps next week or are we totally wrapped up on the eighth?
Your, your second meetings of each month are exclusive to-
Title 21.
Uh, Title 21 issues. Um, so I don't believe that's available. The next available date would be, uh, January the 5th, but, um, as, uh, Mr. Potter points out, uh, he would like assurances of at least six members who'd be available, uh, and eligible to vote and I don't know that we can guarantee that. I mean, we haven't polled the, uh, the commission.
Didn't we originally have a, a third December meeting penciled in, but then we, we dropped it off because we didn't need it? I mean, I really don't want to be here a third Monday, but I, you know, that's our duty. That's what we signed up for, so.
The thing is, we're always going to have two people missing-
That's correct.
-by definition for anything that deals with-
The possible case is seven.
Seven, right.
Um, I guess in most cases I'd be willing to go for a six, and we certainly were tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I'm new to the commission, but is there a reason why we can't do it next Tuesday? I mean, next Monday?
Basically because we've, we've, we've blocked the whole time out to deal with Title 21 and that's all we want to deal with at that particular, I mean, sometimes those things go on and on, especially when we're dealing with this chapter seven stuff.
Which is the design?
Yep. Yeah, Ms. Pease?
Well, frankly, I would put business and, business, private sector business before public sector business in this circumstance.
We, we've, we've had it scheduled that way for, and announced. Yes, Ms. Pease?
Oh, I have another question. I just feel, um, awful, um, that we've had members of the public sitting here for, uh, almost four hours in anticipation of testifying and, um, I don't know whether the petitioner would entertain having an open hearing that's continued later if some members wanted to give their testimony tonight. Um, again, it's just, um, that's a lot of people out there who spend a lot of time waiting and I feel badly about that.
Right, and, and many of them went home on the basis that we indicated that we were going to ask for postponement. Um, I, you know, if, if the members of the audience that were here tonight to testify on it felt comfortable, um, saying what they wanted to say, um, without having the benefit of a presentation and question and answer to us, the petitioner, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with that. Um, you know, because I do think it is unfair, but my preference is to not have me give a presentation tonight, um, so that it is all done freshly. It is late in the evening. Um, I've watched you guys a long time. It's not necessarily the best time to get into a heavy-duty case. Um, not that I don't believe that the merits are here for this, but I think it's a, it's a tough situation and it's a lot of information and you ought to have all the information and the benefit of all the input from the community and the input from us and answers from us as well, so.
Okay.
I mean, if, you know, if, if they are going to be out of town, um, later this month or in January and couldn't be here to testify and don't feel comfortable giving, um, you know, writing something and having them present that, you know, certainly open it up and they can give their testimony, but I, I do not want to give my testimony and presentation tonight.
How does the 15th look for members of the commission? I mean, that's-
Saturday?
That's a-
Saturday.
No, no, no. Well, I meant-
Oh, that's a Monday.
It's seven, yes. It should be Monday. I'm thinking Monday, the next one would be the eighth and then, so the 15th will be Monday. I mean, I, I can make it. I don't know about anybody else.
I can make that. Question on, another way to look at it is maybe on the, I mean, I hate to take time away from Title 21, but, you know, we did come for work session today at 5:30. Maybe we can make on the eighth, uh, we, maybe we meet at 5:30. Um, and generally at those meetings, we work as a committee, you know, is there some way to work it so that-
No.
-we can do both? And I'd come in, I'd rather, I could be here on the 15th. I think I'd certainly do that. Um, but I'd rather come in out earlier on the eighth and do Title 21 and also, um, make this, you know, at 6:30 or early on the agenda.
That would be more preferable to me. Well, the only way I think it'd be fair to the public who's sat and waited would be to do the project first because Title 21, we have no way of guessing how long it'll take.
Well, we could do, could we do a work session at 5:30? I think is what Mr. Wellington is proposing, where we can informally maybe work through some of these issues. We'll stop, 6:30 have the meeting. You know, maybe that takes us to, to 8:30, makes, takes us to 10:30, but, you know, I got to agree with Ms. Yoshimura and I've said it a bunch of times, the public takes precedent. A project delayed adds innumerably to the expense and I think in this particular case, and, you know, Ms. Jones has her rule and I think it's a good rule that we do just Title 21 on these second meetings, but this is, the exception should- But this is, the exception should be made here because we, as the Commission, really drop the ball. You know, we can't just put on one person leaving. I mean, we caught a whole bunch of people by surprise and didn't let them know. So, you know, whether it's the eighth or the fifteenth, I think that's the way to go.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you're trying to accommodate a December meeting, we're going to have to poll the members who are not here, and that would be specifically Mr. Phelps and Mr. Frederick would be the two people. Because Mr. Wang and Tony are already conflicted out.
Can we do that tomorrow? And do we have any notice requirement problems with going on the eighth or the fifteenth, depending on their availability?
No, there would be no problem to continue, to.
We could actually.
To do that.
We could just continue it till next week and treat it as a public hearing that gets heard first, and then deal with Title twenty-one as a second part of it.
Mr. Chairman, my preference would be to do it next Monday if Mr. Fredericks and Mr. Phelps are available, or to do it some other time during the month of December when we have seven members.
Well, if we extend it, we can always deal with that next week if we don't have the full, the full board.
And can we get an email out to the community councils? Because I know Ms. Wells should be very much on this.
So why don't we, let's, positive motion to continue both of these until next week, and then they would be heard first, right out of the chute after we do our.
Mr. Chairman, you haven't opened the public hearing, so you can't continue. It is a postponement.
Okay, well, then we can, so it wouldn't be a continuing, it would just be a postponement. Okay, that's fine.
Is it possible if there's people who, is there anyone here who wants to speak? Maybe.
Could you ask the audience if there's anyone who would want to speak?
But he wouldn't want to give his discussion initially. He wants everybody to hear it, so, and I agree with that. We need to start.
Two of the people in the audience, and they indicated that they wanted to speak after the presentation.
Yeah.
When it's fresh in everybody's head.
So let's just.
Follow that protocol.
Yeah, let's just have a motion to postpone this till next, till next week, the eighth.
Or the fifteenth, whichever we can get the, we have to have a minimum of six people.
I move that we postpone cases two thousand eight one three zero and two thousand eight one four zero to December eighth, possibly to be postponed again, depending on Commissioner availability.
I second.
That's been seconded. Thank you, Ms. Yoshimura. Any objection? Okay, that passes unanimously. So we will hear these cases next week, providing we have a full.
Correct.
Board that's satisfactory.
We appreciate if everyone would keep your packets so I don't have to do another routing.
And staff, can you make sure the community councils are notified?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure they'll get the word out real well if they are, so.
Okay, any Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I would just like to say that to avoid this situation in the future, if commissioners know they'll be leaving early, that should definitely be told before the meeting so it can be announced that our numbers will be dropping, because it does make a difference. And there may be times when somebody gets up sick, but if you know you have to leave at a certain time, it's appropriate, I think, to let the Chair know.
Yeah, we'll have to pass that on to the commissioners that aren't here. Any further discussions? And a motion to adjourn?
So.
Thank you. Moved. No objections, I'm sure.